All right. Good afternoon and welcome to the April 23rd, 2024 council meeting. Madam Clerk.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
All right. At this time, please go ahead and stand for the invocation and then please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance by Mayor Protam Joe Stapleton.
Lord, we thank you for this gathering. We thank you for the ability to make decisions with the wisdom that you've provided. We ask that you grant us that wisdom while we make decisions today. We also ask that you watch over those who protect us, those domestically and those abroad. In these things, we ask in thy name, amen.
Join me as I salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We get to start off with some really fun recognitions this afternoon. So the first group that I'm going to call up are the Corona Del Mar Girls Water Polo. If you could come on up, let me tell you for everyone in the audience why we are celebrating today. CDM High School's girls water polo team went 2011 on their way to earning the 2024 CIF Southern Section Division Championships. So you're going to go all the way to the front because I'm going to have the coach make sure he comes in and tells us a few things. So you might want to go right behind there so we have you. Yeah, perfect. Team member Reagan Weir was named CIF Southern Section Division One Player of the Year. Which one's Reagan? Congratulations. That's awesome. While teammates Ava Shoning, who's going to Brown University, and Meredith Evans were named to the all CIF Southern Section Division One First Team. And then teammates Audrey Long and Mackenzie Dolander were named to the all CIF Division One Southern Section Second and Third Teams respectively. Head Coach Mark Hunt was named CIF Southern Section Division One Coach of the Year in his inaugural season. Congratulations, Coach. That's awesome. CDM High School Girls Water Polo Team becomes the winningest team program in CIF Girls Water Polo history, collecting their eighth CIF title. Let's cheer that one. All right. So ladies, if you could go on the other side of that table right there, your coach is going to be saying just a few words and since he has to face us, it'd probably be easier to do it that way.
Yes, I'd like to first off to say thank you very much, Mayor O'Neill and City Council Members. This is extremely, we're very pleased to be here to gain this recognition. Behind me here, you see a lot of early mornings, you see a lot of swim yardage. I'm sorry, I'll keep my hands off. You have a, it was a lot of hard work and a lot of challenges. And a lot of that came from moving parts that were outside of what you see here as well. You know, I'm very appreciative of Dr. Haley, Principal at Corona Del Mar High School, Athletic Director Brian Walsh, my staff, Coach Drayson Berry and Coach Doug Jacoby. You know, I really believe that we had a very strong, our booster program led by President Jackie Dolander. I mean, there's a lot of moving parts behind us that really helped our success, but truly the recognition is the hard work of these just absolutely stellar women behind me here. And so again, thank you for acknowledging us today. We love to be here and we really are proud to represent City Newport Beach.
Well, we're really proud of you too. So congratulations. So we have a certificate for you. So because there's so many of you, what we're going to do is we're just going to have you come forward and then we'll come around and take a picture with you right up front. So going down.
Oh, sir. Go ahead. I have to go over here.
Okay.
No. Dear, we cannot see you.
There we go.
Almost before.
We had a good run.
So what we're going to do is we're going to move from CDM to Newport Harbor. So if the Newport Harbor Wrestling Girls and Boys could come up for recognition, let me tell you why we're recognizing Newport Harbor High School's wrestling program. They saw three students on the girls wrestling team and two students on the boys wrestling team win individual championships. So come on, you can, since there are fewer of you, why don't we go? Yeah, perfect. So I want to introduce you to Marlee Solomon, Skylar Gassel, Duda Rodriguez, Damian Prima and Anthony Mono. Congratulations to all of you. That's phenomenal. So my understanding is Marlee, Skylar and Duda won the Girls Wrestling Individual CIF Southern Section Championship as well as Master Meat Championships in your respective weight class. Congratulations. Damian and Anthony each won the Boys Wrestling Individual CIF Southern Section Championship in their respective weight class. And then Anthony, Skylar and Duda each won their respective championships for the second consecutive year. Skylar's going to be attending Lehigh University in the fall and Duda will be attending McKendry University, both on wrestling scholarships. Congratulations. That's awesome. So Coach, if you have a few remarks, that'd be phenomenal. And then if you could just stand right next to your coach, just while he's making the remarks, we can see him a little bit better. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you for having us here. Yeah, I'm very proud of our program where we started six years ago when I started and these kids have come far. You know, like you said, two-time CIF Champ and Damian, the CIF Champ. We never had that in the history of Newport Harbor. You know, I know we're here recognizing these two guys and the girls too, but you know, it is a team and our team looks very strong this year, this year coming up. And these guys are going to lead them and I hope we have some more kids next year here.
Well, I suspect if you keep winning like this, you will. But yeah, this is phenomenal. So congratulations. I actually have individual certificates for all of you. And so we're going to come down and yes, oh, please.
I just want to say that I was a wrestler at Newport Harbor High School and I did 112, 125, 145. I didn't win one match the entire time that I wrestled and we had a very awkward program, but over the years it has excelled and I'm very proud of the accomplishments that you guys have made. It has made our high school very on the ranks there for our team. So I appreciate you guys' hard work. It's a lot of effort, a lot of dedication on the wrestling. It is a very intense sport and I was not good at it, but I'm glad to see that you guys are.
Look where you are now.
Mayor, also just wanted to let you know too, that the girls also took second in state of California as a team.
Oh, congratulations. That's awesome.
Sorry again. Thought I turned it off. Sorry, I'll stop touching it. They're going to go first. Oh wait, we can't, yeah. If the gentleman can stand a little behind, but there we go. Perfect. Head, missing Damian, there we go. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three.
That's phenomenal. And then we're going to move into a proclamation. So if we have folks, I know we have Sue here, but if we have folks from Literacy Foundation, if you could come on forward, that would be great. So many of you have been here before and heard this discussion, but this year we're celebrating people who are helpers, people who really get out and help their community above and beyond. Sue Grant is one of those people. And so before I start up on the proclamation on the Literacy Foundation, I've asked my fellow council members for recommendations and nominations for people and groups to come up that we can recognize and inspire. And this recommendation came from Mayor Protam Stapleton, so.
Yeah, I would just say, Sue, you're an inspiration to us all and I couldn't think of anyone more embodying of what it means to be a helper in the city of Newport Beach. And I couldn't thank you enough for bringing me along in the journey with the Literacy Project. The fact that you've raised over $5 million on your own with the organization. And I remember talking to former Chief Lewis, our police chief here in Newport Beach before Cartwright, and he made a comment to me that always stuck with me. And I've told you this before, but he said, if we could solve literacy, there'd be no more crime. And that's why I continue to serve this good fight with you. And I'm just so proud of your work and the organization, all that you do. And we're just so blessed to have you in the city of Newport Beach. So congratulations.
So I'm going to read a proclamation and then Sue, you'll have an opportunity to speak. So just giving you a preparation for the next minute. Whereas the Literacy Project was founded in 2009 to serve the purpose of solving reading problems amongst school-aged children who are in danger of becoming illiterate adults. And whereas founder Sue Grant is a visionary whose passion for giving the gift of literacy to struggling readers has fueled the formation and success of the Literacy Project. And whereas Sue Grant's focus on her college education and psychology forged a desire to help troubled youth and thus began a lifelong journey to help those who need it most. And whereas the Literacy Project has raised over $5.1 million to provide a reading program at no cost to both the child and school within four states, the nonprofit's 30-hour program significantly improves a child's ability to read, averaging skill increases from 76% to 129%. And the agency has also donated $1.96 million worth of reading games to 49,014 family members, promoting family literacy. And whereas thanks to her leadership at the Literacy Project, Sue Grant was featured as one of the 20 Most Inspiring Women Entrepreneurs 2022 by the Women Leaders Magazine in '22. And Sue Grant has also earned the California Congress of Parents, Teachers and Students' Service Award, U.S. Congressional Service Award, and a top-five finish at the World Literacy Awards in 2021 and recently in 2023. And additionally, she's a co-founding director of the Coalition for Reading Excellence in Washington, DC. And whereas the Literacy Project leadership will tell us that there are many ways to save a life, the gift of reading is one of them. Now therefore, I, Will O'Neill, Mayor of the City of Newport Beach, on behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, do hereby recognize the Literacy Project for all of its work as a helper organization, ensuring that our future is bright and literate. Congratulations.
Thank you all for having me. And I want you to know, Literacy Project really is a result and was launched right here in the city of Newport Beach. And this town, this city, and how passionate people are to really care about the underprivileged, the underserved and the under-resourced is what made it happen. This is a village. It's a village of passionate people that care about education, that care about keeping our kids out of juvenile hall, care about our kids learning to read at the right age of second and third grade. And I really did not do it alone, so I'm thanking you on behalf of everybody.
Amazing. Please thank your Board of Directors as well. And then we're going to go ahead and go take a picture.
All right. Oh, wait. No problem. Great. All right. Madam Clerk.
The City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The City Council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items.
All right. Now's the time for City Council announcements and oral reports from City Council on committee activities. Councilmember Clyman.
No report.
Councilmember Blom.
None, thank you.
Councilmember Avery.
Yeah, I was, did a real fun thing yesterday morning, eight o'clock, Newport Harbor High School, recognizing the school's mentor program. And the mayor was there. He's been doing it for many years and I've also been in the mentor program for, I think, about 10 years. And it's just really extraordinary, the relationship between a mentor and a mentee and just being someone that, you know, they can talk to besides their parents or other adults. And just see the growth of the students over the period of the time that we're with them and doing some job shadowing, they're doing some job shadowing. And also just getting to know them and just an incredible group of students. And we've got a great community. I don't know how many people, maybe 100, that are doing this program at the high school. It's excellent. So I was happy to attend that. And I also attended another fun thing and this was the Oasis Sailing Club's Opening Day event down at the Balboa Yacht Basin, which they do every year, just like the rest of the clubs do over in this time of year when the ice recedes from the Newport Harbor and people are able to go sailing. But again, there you see a whole nother thing in our city. You know, here this was, the high school thing was all about youth and just, you know, their futures in front of them and being able to sort of see that is really great. And then to see people who are in their 50s, 60s, 80s, 90s in this meeting outdoors, celebrating the fact that they're going to, you know, open their club for the season and do a lot of sailing on the club's two 34-foot boats, which are just kept immaculately. And the sailing does so much for these folks to get out on the water for very low cost and sail with six, seven other people on the boats and go out in the ocean and get a feel for it and come back in and, you know, do all the tying up and all the things, nautical things you need to do. And they're a very passionate group and there was a big crowd there and so it's been growing the whole time. And as we all know, the city supports Oasis, but we have so many residents and people that support Oasis. It's such a great program, not just the sailing, but everything else that Oasis does. So this was just one aspect of a phenomenal program at Oasis and in our city. So was really happy to attend that with the mayor and I think most of the council. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wagon.
Yes, as Councilman Avery said, I too had a mentor for Newport Harbor High School with the mayor as well, joining us for our mentorship breakfast the other day. It was nice to see how many members of our community participated in having a mentee. And it was a packed basketball court there or gymnasium full of both students and mentors. So it was nice to see the community come up for that. And I too was a participant at the Oasis Sailing Center and that was a neat event as Councilmember Avery said. Very cool to see our community coming together. And then I joined the mayor on Friday at our city's annual track meet and it was great to see all of our recreation staff out there. They spent a lot of time, they're out there till eight o'clock at night, taking things down, setting up early. And there was a ton of kids from all of our local schools. And it was interesting to me to see that that event had been going on since 1972 and they have 50 years of records being taken. And two of those records actually fell at the event. Local kid blazed through those times. So it was neat to see, one record was from the 80s and the other's from the 90s. So neat to see some youth engaging in track and doing and excelling in it. So fun to see, but again, thanks to the staff for their hard work of coming out there. It was all hands on deck and I appreciate their efforts.
Thank you. Councilmember Grant.
Thank you. I do have a few oral reports, so I'll just read to make it quicker. I do serve as the council representative for the transportation corridor agencies and also on the finance and capital improvements committees of that agency. We meet monthly and recently, I just wanted to give a little update. We revised the toll enforcement ordinances to comply with new state laws, including the time for contesting violations, low-income payment plans, reduced transponder pricing, which benefits everybody, and handicap assistance. We also approved major capital improvement projects. You might think that these, the agency is completely built out, but they're not. They're continuing to improve the transportation corridors and we have projects going on with the 24191 Express Connector, the Route 73 Catalina Toll Plaza that we have here will be expanded, the lanes and the Route 241 Loma Expansion Lanes. So those capital projects are moving forward. And then I wanted to share a little bit of information about one of their unique initiatives, which is the Live Oak Cattle Grazing Program, which occurs in Tributial Canyon east of the 241 Toll Road. The TCA partners, interestingly enough, with a five-bar beef ranch. It's the only remaining cattle grazing ranch in Orange County and they perform grazing activity on the TCA lands. This pilot program utilizes cattle to consume non-native plants, which reduces fire risk and protects the environment. It's a really unique but important program. I'm sure our fire department knows about something like this and it helps the county in general. I'm pleased to report that the TCA provides excellent value, flexibility and service for all of our residents. I also had an opportunity to join Assemblymember Dixon and others for a presentation by the U.S. Border Patrol in San Diego. I know Councilmember Stapleton also recently went down to the border. It's an eye-opening experience to see border violations in plain view, in progress, with open scaling of the walls and vehicles with hidden compartments, all kinds of stuff that you think is going on, is going on. All of this is very unsurprising to the Border Patrol. They're unfazed, they see it daily. The takeaway was that these public servants at the border are extremely professional. They're well-trained and dedicated to their work and they need a lot more funding and resources and definitely support from other agencies to make a difference in protecting our border. And then finally, I was very pleased to support the Newport Beach Fire Department along with my partner in crime, I guess, Councilmember Clyman, in play in the second annual Newport Beach Fire Department Pickle Fest with first responders from around the Southland and proceeds going to the Ben Carlson Foundation. A big thank you goes to Newport Beach firefighters Anthony Galvez and Jim O'Brien for taking the lead in the tournament planning and creating this great franchise. It's another example of our amazing community coming together to support each other.
Thank you. Mayor Protam.
I don't know, cattle grazing, border tours, pickleball, I don't know if I could compete with that.
Renaissance.
Renaissance, I guess. I did have the opportunity in the spirit of Literacy Project, I went and read to some kids over at the Balboa Library and that was a lot of fun. I also had the chance for being on the other side. My fiance actually spoke at the sports talk with Tom Johnson and Laird Hayes. So that was a lot of fun. She talked about our days as a former Dallas Cowboys cheerleader. So it was fun to be there to support her and have that conversation. I also attended the International Boat Show. If you had the chance to go over, I think they had over 300 boats, 400 floating docks and I think they had over 20,000 people attended that. So congratulations to their entire team for continuing to elevate another event in Newport Beach. It was a terrific job. I also attended the Oasis Sailing Opening Day. I thought that was incredible. One thing I did want to highlight, I had an opportunity to join our Public Works team and kudos to them. Dave Webb and his entire team, we uncovered a homeless encampment off the Santa Ana River Trail behind Newport shores. I wish I brought some photos, but if you go on social media, I know you can see them. I posted some of them. But we cleared out, and by we, I mean our Public Works team, cleared out over 20 tons of trash debris from the homeless encampment. So this is federal-protected land. This is marshland and I couldn't be more excited for our team and Tara, all of her help getting this project completed as well. So kudos to the city of Newport Beach for getting that done. I also attended the Orangewood Fest on Saturday. They raised over $600,000 for kids in need. It was a cool obstacle course. I'm sad to report that our very own Bill Lyon tore his peck in the obstacle course and his teammate broke his ankle. So it was not a gala and it was very intense, but they did, they raised a lot of money for the kids. So and coming up May 4th, next Saturday, is our annual polo tournament down by the beach. So Newport Beach Foundation, if you want to Google that, we've got a few tickets left. So that's my report.
Thanks. Sounds like they raise money for doctors too. I want to say thank you to our Newport Beach library who was able to attend also one of our, and actually my last storytime. So that was a lot of fun. Balboa Island Garage Sale. Thank you to my fellow colleague, Councilmember Blom, for sitting in front of the fire station with me for a couple hours and taking all questions. And it was fun. We had donuts. Not enough people came by. And then I was able to speak to the Lido Island Community Association, their HOA over there. Took a lot of good questions there as well. And then I was able to give a proclamation to Newport Harbor High School soccer team. They won their CIF championship, which was phenomenal. And actually, our city clerk's son was there, so she took lots of pictures. It was fun. And then I was also able to represent the city yesterday. The Orange County District Attorney has an annual victims' rights ceremony and it was moving and touching. And in fact, because of that, we will be making sure to bring in one of the organizations that represents victims' rights to one of our future council meetings for a proclamation because I'd like to highlight the help that they're providing to the community as well. All right. Madam Clerk.
This is a time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion. Those are items one through 12. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar items. Speakers, Ms. Lewitt, comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine, will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommended in action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the city council votes on the motion unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Council, do we have any items to pull or conflicts to declare? Councilmember Clyman.
None for me.
Councilmember Blom.
I have a conflict on item five due to real property interest on 224.
Councilmember Avery.
I need to recuse for item number 12, public hearings, based on the fact that I represent the OC Sanitation District Board.
So that's item 13, but we're on the consent calendar for now. Got it? All right. Councilmember Wagon.
I was absent at the last meeting, so just reflect an abstention on the minutes.
All right. Got it? Councilmember Grant.
None.
Mayor Protam.
None.
I have none. Do we have a motion?
Yeah, I move the consent calendar with the amendments to item one and a recusal from Councilman Blom on item number five and an abstention from item number one on the minutes for Councilman Wagon.
Do I have a second?
I also attended the Oasis Sailing opening day. I thought that was incredible. One thing I did want to highlight, I had an opportunity to join our Public Works team and kudos to them. Dave Webb and his entire team, we uncovered a homeless encampment off the Santa Ana River Trail behind Newport shores. I wish I brought some photos, but if you go on social media, I know you can see them. I posted some of them. But we cleared out, and by we, I mean our Public Works team cleared out over 20 tons of trash debris from the homeless encampment. So this is federal protected land. This is marshland and I couldn't be more excited for our team and Tara, all of her help getting this project completed as well. So kudos to the city of Newport Beach for getting that done. I also attended the Orangewood Fest on Saturday. They raised over $600,000 for kids in need. It was a cool obstacle course. I'm sad to report that our very own Bill Lyon tore his peck in the obstacle course and his teammate broke his ankle. So it was not a gala and it was very intense, but they did a, they raised a lot of money for the kids. So and coming up, May 4th, next Saturday, is our annual polo tournament down by the beach. So Newport Beach Foundation, if you want to Google that, we've got a few tickets left. So that's my report.
Thanks. Sounds like they raise money for doctors, too. I want to say thank you to our Newport Beach library who was able to attend also one of our, and actually my last storytime. So that was a lot of fun. Balboa Island Garage Sale. Thank you to my fellow colleague, Councilmember Blom, for sitting in front of the fire station with me for a couple hours and taking all questions. And it was fun. We had donuts. Not enough people came by. And then I was able to speak to the Lido Island Community Association, their HOA over there, took a lot of good questions there as well. And then I was able to give a proclamation to Newport Harbor High School soccer team. They won their CIF championship, which was phenomenal. And actually, our city clerk's son was there, so she took lots of pictures. It was fun. And then I was also able to represent the city yesterday. The Orange County District Attorney has an annual victims' rights ceremony and it was moving and touching. And in fact, because of that, we will be making sure to bring in one of the organizations that represents victims' rights to one of our future council meetings for a proclamation, because I'd like to highlight the help that they're providing to the community as well. All right. Madam Clerk.
This is a time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion. Those are items one through 12. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine, will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the city council votes on the motion unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Counsel, do we have any items to pull or conflicts to declare? Councilmember Clyman.
None for me.
Councilmember Blom.
I have a conflict on item five due to real property interest on 224 Marine.
Councilmember Avery.
I need to recuse for item number 12, public hearings, based on the fact that I represent the OC Sanitation District Board.
So that's item 13, but we're on the consent calendar for now. Got it? All right. Councilmember Wagon.
I was absent at the last meeting, so just reflect an abstention on the minutes.
All right. Got it. Councilmember Grant.
None.
Mayor Protem.
None.
I have none. Do we have a motion?
Yeah, I move the consent calendar with the amendments to item one and a recusal from Councilman Blom on item number five and an abstention from item number one on the minutes for Councilman Wagon.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, a second by Councilmember Avery. We'll go out to public comment on the consent calendar at this time. Do we have any public comment on the consent calendar? Is this going to be on the moorings? All right, I will call you up on, so this is going to be consent, but you'll come up right after this one? Got it? Okay. On the consent calendar on this one? All right, we'll bring it back. We have a motion and a second. Let's go ahead and vote.
After reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance titles for items three and four. Ordinance 2024-8, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach approving a planned community development plan amendment for the residences at 1400 Bristol Street Project located at 1400 Bristol Street. Ordinance 2024-9, approving a development agreement for the residences at 1400 Bristol Street Project located at 1400 Bristol Street. Ordinance 2024-10, approving a planned community development amendment for residences at 1401 Quail Street located at 1401 Quail Street. And ordinance 2024-11, approving a development agreement for the residences at 1401 Quail Street Project located at 1401 Quail Street. The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
All right, thank you very much. Madam Clerk.
Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
All right. If you have public comments on non-agenda items, please come forward.
Members of the council, thank you for your time. My name is Heinz Austin. A short, earlier this month, the Harbor Commission recommended a 400% mooring rate increase in the harbor. I'm here to advocate on behalf of veterans. There are a number of veterans in the harbor. Some are disabled veterans and a 400% rate increase is bound to drive some into homelessness. We've been in contact with the Public Law Center and there's a veterans unit in the Public Law Center who indicated that they are interested in investigating the housing element of the city of Newport Beach. And I'm just here to ask of you the best contact person with whom they can make contact to initiate the investigation.
That would be our city attorney.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. Is the mic working?
Good evening, mayor and council.
Okay.
My name is Lee Pearl and I live on Balboa Island. First thing I want to figure out is, how do I get a picture with the council someday? That's a, that's a pretty cool thing that I got to get one of these days. I'm thrilled tonight to be the spokesperson for upcoming artistic mural that promises to transform the corner of Park Avenue and Marine, the fire station side, into a canvas of Balboa Island's rich history and charm.
I don't know, do we have the graphic? Oh, there it is.
The graphic is behind you. The Park Avenue mural is part of a four-year journey with a working committee of island leaders, artists, residents to create what you see today. What was initially conceived as a painted wall concept has evolved into something truly spectacular. A 10-foot-high by 56-foot-long mosaic mural made up of thousands of half-inch-square, brightly colored tiles. And I have samples of the tiles. They're really pretty cool. I'll pass those out after my presentation. This impressive piece of art was created by local artist and resident Barbara Abbott, who's here tonight. I'll be introducing at the end some of the participants in the project. To pay for the project, the Balboa Island Museum and the mural committee have launched a grassroots fundraising effort, allowing friends and neighbors to be recognized for their funding participation. We've already presented the project to the city's Arts Commission and they seem very excited. We invite you and the residents of Newport Beach to consider helping us complete this project. With your support, the unveiling will be at the end of September. We appreciate the support of the BIIA, the Little Balboa Island Homeowners Association, and the sponsorship by the Balboa Island Museum. Funds are to be raised by a tax-deductible donation to the Balboa Island Legacy Alliance, a nonprofit that's been set up. Every contribution, no matter the size, brings us one step closer to our goal. It also gives you an opportunity to have your family name recognized as part of the project. Today, we ask you to spread the word, share the news with your friends, family, and colleagues, and we can build a community of supporters. I want to introduce a few of the people that are involved in the project this evening. My partner and wife, Sue. Barbara Abbott, you want to stand up? Since you're the artist, we'll let you stand up. And the president of the BIIA is here, Dan Abbott. And John Connors, I think you may have met John Connors, is the president of the Balboa Island Museum Board.
Great.
And with that, I will hand these around so you could take a look at them and I can't really answer any questions, but hopefully can gain your support.
Great. Thank you, Lee.
Thank you.
All right. Next speaker.
Adam Leverens. Good afternoon. As was previously mentioned, and I suspect you're all aware, at the Harbor Commission meeting on April 10th, they voted to recommend offshore mooring rate increases ranging from 300 to over 500%. At that meeting, Councilman Beer put up a graphic on the screen behind you, specific to the recommendation. I was unable to locate those materials in the agenda online or in hard copy at the meeting that night. Everyone involved should be fully aware that this is very controversial and there's extreme interest by the public. Clearly, what was adopted on April 10th was available in a documented form. The public had to write, a right to have been provided those materials before the meeting, which they were not. I'm contending that compliance with the open meeting law was not met and I think the Harbor Commission needs a redo, but with proper notice next time. And commissioners that night seemed to have prepared remarks explaining why they supported voting for that. I'm also aware of an email from February by someone involved that says, quote, "I just know we have the votes," close quote. The indication being that since February, there's really been little use in any public input on the matter. I also understand that a number of decision-makers for this and civil servants or formal civil servants have been intimately involved and are equity members of various Newport Harbor yacht clubs and/or hold mooring permits at the yacht clubs. I've been told that the harbor master indicated at a recent staff Commodores meeting that yacht clubs would be exempted from these increases. I've heard that question posed a number of times and have not heard a response that seems adequate. Other decision-makers are pure permit holders who pay substantially less in fees than the offshore mooring people. All of these things are indicative of a financial interest and persons with such interests trying to address or offset a $4.6 million harbor deficit by digging into the pockets of others rather than their own is a wrongful result. The fact that 58% of mooring permities reside outside of the city shouldn't make it okay to take additional advantage of them when they're already paying more than other permit holders for the use of the same state resource. Second unrelated subject, I see you have a little time left. Could someone please take it upon themselves to have someone come in and either rewire or replace what I'm going to refer to as the Starboard microphone? I mean, we've been dealing with that since at least January and it's very unpleasant. Thank you.
You. Next speaker, please.
I'll just stand on my tippy toes to not touch. Hello, my name is Rosalinda Bermudas and I'm here from Families Forward to provide a public comment on the CDBG Annual Action Plan.
So that actually will be an item coming up.
Oh, I apologize. Thank you.
That's okay. No problem. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Gianna DiGidio. I'm a local resident, senior at UC Irvine, and spoken word poet. My passion and enthusiasm for arts in our city brought me here today. Newport Beach is a city filled with beautiful people, oceans, harbors, and stories. Those stories deserve to be preserved and interpreted through poetry. A poet laureate would promote poetic literacy, be a storyteller for the city, an ambassador for the art form. Traditionally, mayors or governors appoint the poet laureate of their choosing for their city or state, which is why I'm here today to request that the council and mayor advocate to appoint a poet laureate and further the discussion and consideration of adding to the culture, arts, and heritage of this great city. I appreciate your consideration. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Is that something maybe we could direct her to our library services director to maybe have a side discussion while she's here? They're both in the same room.
So I'm going to have you put that back. No, no, it's okay. Just put it down. You can go to that mic over there. It's okay. Go to that mic over there. Got it? And then real quickly for that prior speaker, Melissa, could you raise your hand? Perfect. So that would be the person that would be a good idea to start with there. All right, go ahead.
I am E-Planet Thunderstriker and I usually don't. So primary concern is one of the pages I submitted a few days ago that you received as correspondence. I don't have any written comments prepared, so I don't know if I'll be able to get to competitive leadership or your Parks and Rec teen leadership, maybe development program, because you guys have an agenda thing in there as well. And oh, and the literacy speed reading, I've done it with one page. I don't know if it's taught in high schools at this point. Right now, I've been doing comments for almost two years because my internet is getting hacked. I have one song, I produced only one song because of corruption in the music industry that's supposed to have three la-la segments and it only has two. So what I'm dealing with goes to the last three administrations. Something that I'm concerned about, limited involvement until certain failure or beginning a worldwide citizen's organization, blah blah blah. Appropriate objective individual citizen government organizations notified, involved or otherwise. That is why the hostages that were released by Hamas, Israeli hostages, were shot by Israeli forces, I think in December. So it's very awkward. I'm really a scarlet letter and I can't do this any longer and I don't have kids. People that have kids or are concerned about the future of either America or humankind, they're just, they're not getting involved and I'm just at the point where I'm not really sure I really care. You know, I wanted to end human suffering, you know? All the power struggles that are going on, they can go on without people dying, but that's not what's going on. Direct contact, contact, assistance, and supervision. So I don't even know if San Bernardino clerk filed this appropriately. I've already had at least a couple of times documents submitted to the clerks didn't make it to the appropriate place and I'm certainly dealing with corruption and certainly something is being sold to citizens everywhere as to why something is or isn't being done after two years. So right now, I'm just hoping that maybe we can find out if San Bernardino, because in February I submitted the first week and in March, there was no reply from the chair's assistant. So all I'm asking for is, was this page received by them? Why am I talking to you instead of federal agents or maybe at this point even the CIA? I don't know. So that's all I'm asking is I'll be back maybe tomorrow and if somebody could find out, did they receive this? Was there any action taken? Why or why not?
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please. Lee, did you forget somebody? Kind of looked like you forgot somebody.
I forgot too. My error, Lee Pearl, Balboa Island. I forgot to introduce Georgie Fenton for, she's my co-chair fundraiser for the project. She was sitting on the other side and I messed up. And then I also wanted to thank, because Manoush Moshe Yedi is providing the building, I wanted to thank him for providing the building that we're going to put the mural on.
Great.
And thank you for the extra time.
You bet. All right. All right. And then real quickly, before we move into business, I do want to recognize we have a new hire in our police department. We have a new deputy chief named Javier Aguilar. Deputy Chief, if you could stand up for us real quick. Welcome to Newport Beach. Very excited. All right, let's move into public hearings. We'll move into item number 13. Before we do so, do we have any conflicts to announce?
Mr. Mayor, I have a conflict.
Understood. Thank you. We're moving to item number 13 for planning purposes. I assume we have a little bit of a staff report here. So we can make sure this is a little bit more on the brief side because we've got both the appellant and applicant presenting, so that'd be great. The, both of them have requested and received 10 minutes each to do a presentation and then five-minute rebuttal for the appellant. And then if we have any questions, we'll bring them, bring folks back up. So let's go with the staff report first.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening to the council. My name is David Lee, senior planner. This is the OCSD Bay Bridge Pump Station Appeal Project. This is the project location. There's three aspects. First is the Bay Bridge Pump Station itself, located at 250 East Coast Highway. It connects to a new forced main vault on the other side of the bridge. And above that is the construction staging area proposed at Lower Casaway's Park. This project includes adjusted property lines to expand the project from approximately 4,000 square feet to 14,000 square feet, as you can see on the image on the right. The gray is the original existing property lines and with the green is the proposed. This proposed project for the pump station includes a generator room, electrical room, underground pump station below grade, and an odor control facility on the right side of the site plan. It also includes a forced main vault. As you can see, the red line, it microtunnels from the station to the left side of the screen and the yellow box, which is the new valve vault located below grade in the public right-of-way. There's landscaping proposed around this vault area. This is the rendering of the project architecture. It's located, this is on East Coast Highway. There's no street setback required, but there is a proposed landscape buffer of six to 10 feet in depth, includes drought-tolerant plants that have been reviewed by the city In terms of SEQA, OC Sanitation District has approved the proposed project and certified environmental impact report. A petition was filed by the Bayside Marina Village and therefore the OC Superior Court did uphold the EIR except for the construction staging identification. Subsequently, the OCSD prepared an addendum which did identify Lower Casaway's as a staging area and the city council did approve that lease agreement, I believe, September of last year. And the planning commission approved this project on January, in January of 2024, but they added this condition of approval, says that "at the request and to the satisfaction of the community development director, the applicant shall make future alterations to the exterior facade for consistency and compatibility with the architecture of a future-approved Back Bay Landing mixed-use project." Staff has prepared a resolution and does recommend approval of the project. Again, the applicant and appellant have presentations. Thank you.
Do we have any questions before we go out to the applicant? All right. We have applicant and council here. So apparently we're having issues with our Starboard mic, so we're going to go ahead and use this mic only over here, please. Oh, the, I apologize. I said applicant. I apologize. I meant appellant. Sorry, sorry.
That's what you meant.
I understand the confusion now. I apologize. I meant appellant. All right, we'll start with the appellant first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'm John Erskine. I'm a partner in the Nosiman Law Firm, representing Bayside Village Marina. We've been representing them since 2009. With us today is Gordon Craig, our project manager. He's also been working on the project on Back Bay Landing since that time. And the owner's representative, Michael Gelfand, is here and he will have a few minutes to talk to you about our situation. And then also Mark Nero from Fusco Engineering, who worked on the service lane, the truck service lane that some of you have seen, will be there in case you have any questions about that or staff has any questions. Will be there in case you have any questions about that, or staff has any questions. So we are, we are appealing this project to the city council to overturn the planning commission's fairly narrow four-to-two vote to approve a massive expansion of the pump station. And I'm not gonna quibble about the staff report, because I think it, the staff report does ultimately tell you that it's going from 4,800 feet to 14,500 square feet, but on the cover page, it says 7,500 square feet. That's the, those are the buildings within the expanded footprint. And that whole, as you saw, that whole project frontage is longer than the length of half of a football field. It's about 173 feet on your scenic Coast Highway corridor. We're appealing for several reasons. The city council unanimously and the coastal commission unanimously approved Back Bay Landing back in 2015 to 2016. We were very proud of that, those approvals. They were unanimous. It was a difficult project. We, you know, we never thought we would get 49 residential units in a CM coastal zone, and it took a lot of work with the commission, commission staff, over a period of two years to achieve that. The 10,000-square-foot expansion will lose the city 30,000 square feet of residential and CM uses, because we have three stories of development. So 30,000 square feet loss of visitors serving and residential. The proposed project is, we think, is too massive for this iconic location in Newport Harbor on scenic Coast Highway. It'll block views of the castaways and the Back Bay. And as far as we are informed, there's been very, very little outreach to nearby residents in the wider Newport Beach community. And as we will explain, there are feasible alternative sites. So Gordon, let's get into the PowerPoint here. So for, most of you know this, but for the audience and for those looking at home, this is the 31-acre area that is the project. It's a three-parcel parcel map. Parcels one and parcel two are the historic Bayside Village Mobile Home Park. Parcel three is 31 acres. The development site is down there on the bottom of the aerial, and you can see the existing pump station there in that little square on Coast Highway. Next slide. This is the conceptual site plan that was approved by your prior city council and the coastal commission in 2015 and 2016. It includes a waterfront village with 49 residential units, visitors serving retail, marine service, commercial, public plazas, a 12-foot public promenade that'll go completely around from the Irvine Company property on the south side all the way around, and ultimately connect with Newport Dunes. Next slide. When the OC SAN started to publicly announce in late 2016, after our approvals, that they needed to expand the pump station, we started working cooperatively, we thought cooperatively, with OC SAN, the Irvine Company, and other stakeholders to see if we could come up with an alternative location. It's, I don't wanna steal any of Michael's thunder, but it's kind of like no good deed goes unpunished in the, in the effort that we made to try to do that. But there are several alternate locations. Of course, the one that we've, I think some of you know, that we think is the most advantageous is Bayside's .62 acres on the south side of Coast Highway. It would not block views. The construction staging would be easier. The traffic that's gonna come from the 1,600-plus truck trips over a couple-year period, that's gonna absolutely devastate the area for four to five years of construction, would be able to turn right instead of having to make two lefts onto Bayside. Next slide, please. And here's a little schematic rendering that Gordon and Fusco Engineering put together to show how the generator building and the lift station could go on Bayside property on the south side with the odor control building on the north side. Next slide. So up in the top of this slide, you can see some photos that I actually took back in November of '22, showing a chemical truck parked on the sidewalk in the apron there in front of the existing pump station. Those are not the trucks that'll regularly service the future expanded pump station, but there, there will be some of those trucks based on testimony from OC SAN. What we think would be better is to have this enhanced service lane, which would be separated from the sidewalk, which would allow trucks to, OC SAN trucks to pull off off a Coast Highway and enter the pump station. This is if you don't feel like you can send everybody and the staff back to the drawing board to look at a south-side location. So our requested actions, next slide, are to deny the proposed request as it has been submitted, direct OC SAN to work with city staff and BBM to do the following: select an alternative location, reduce the project size to enhance land-use compatibility, minimize truck servicing impacts to Back Bay Landing, and resubmit for city council approval at a later date. So I'd like to bring up Michael Gelfand. Thank you.
Thank you for your time, Mr. Mayor, council members. There's many things I could go on about in terms of the process that has led us to today. I could go into the lack of transparency from OCSD that led us to this point today. This is the first time that the city council has actually seen this plan. Aside from the two alternatives that John showed you, one, moving the whole project to the south side of the bridge primarily, or changing the accessway, there's another alternative that we were working with OC SAN on, which would put it on the northeast corner of the Back Bay Landing site. Either of those three alternatives would be substantially better than this. I could go into the piecemealing, that literally every nine months, a different scenario laid out by the SAN district in terms of how much space they needed, the amount of time that we went, that we spent, over a million and a half dollars in different plans trying to work with them. But then, instead of dealing with an alternative that actually would make sense to us, they sort of put the cart behind the horse and did this eminent domain action before they had a plan before you, which is, I think, gotten us to the point we are today, which is a plan that takes essentially a half a football field of width on Pacific Coast Highway. And instead of having our project, which was unanimously approved by the city council and the coastal commission, which is not easy to do, that would have really been beautiful, instead, you have a big chunk of Coast Highway replaced with a pump station. And it doesn't have to happen that way. There are multiple alternatives that would actually make this thing quite attractive or essentially irrelevant to the view from Coast Highway. And the other thing is, their plan, I got one more thing to say, their plan, because of the easements, essentially cuts our project in half. Imagine those trucks that you saw in the slide before, going through the middle of Fashion Island every day. We're talking about 60 trips a month. You know, for five years, they led us on thinking it would be 15 trips, but literally, if you look at those pictures, those are the kinds of trucks that would go right through the middle of a project that is supposed to be bringing the public to the site. It's absolutely terrible, and you have the opportunity to just allow some good planning to take place. That's all we're asking you to do. Thank you for your time.
Sorry. Thank you. Before we bring the applicant up, I realize that I was supposed, I should've asked right of way to have council members disclose ex parte conversations, so I'll do that now before we have them come up, since it'll, both of them will have the ability to mention that. And so if you have any, if you met with folks, let them, let us know, and then if there's anything discussed outside materials that are in front of us, let us know. I'll start. I met with the appellant's. I did not discuss anything that's outside the written materials in the, in the staff report. Councilmember Clammon, any ex parte to announce?
I met with both groups, also not outside the scope of what's in the staff report.
Councilmember Blom.
Neither.
Councilmember Wagon.
Yes, I met with OCSD and with the applicant's or the appellant's consulting team, but also to your effect, just about the subject matter.
Got it. Councilmember Grant.
Same. Met with both groups, nothing out of the scope.
Mayor Protem.
Both groups, nothing under scope.
All right. All right, with that, the applicant? You have 10 minutes to present whatever you'd like to, and then that'll start once we get you the... Do you have a presentation?
I do.
Got it. Oh, and then the clicker?
Oh, okay.
All right, when you're ready.
All right. Capt. Mayor O'Neill and city council members, I appreciate your time tonight. I'm Mike Dorman. I'm the director of engineering. Also, I'd like to thank city staff for all their support on this project through the whole duration of this. This project is very important for us. The force mains we currently have were slip-lined 43 years ago. They have a life of 50 years, so really reaching the end of that, and it's just a very critical location in terms of being close to the bay. And we also have the pump station, which is approaching 60 years old, and also at the end of its useful life. So in terms of the appeal topics, I have six topics I'm gonna be going through, and there's a lot of information, so I'll be kind of skimming through fairly quickly. So OC SAN has, you know, 15 pump stations, eight are within the area. We replace four, and this is Bay Bridge. It was, the Bay Bridge pump station was built in 1966, almost 60 years old, and it really handles 50% of the flow on the east side of the bay, so very important pump station. It's the, the pump station, the standby generator, and odor control, and access is only from the front. And just really at the end of its useful life, a couple examples of the pictures are that we had to repair some valves, and we have to do some bypass pumping, just super challenging in there, and that's why we need more physical space in the end of the life. We have a very comprehensive asset management plan. With this asset management plan, we've been doing it successfully for seven years, and as you can see in the wet well, just a lot of corrosion, and it just needs to be replaced. Here's the site you've seen before, the force mains and the pump station. Here's the microtunnel lane. We'll be, microtunneling underneath the bay, and then once that's done, we'll be connecting the force mains on each side. And really, I kind of walked through here, this is the different locations, and I really want to kind of set the stage of how we kind of work through this. In 2014 and 15, OC SAN did a feasibility study for siding. Site number three was opposed by Newport Beach, because it's in Castaways Park, but the south side, as the appellant discussed, there's a couple of issues with that. Environmental concerns, vulnerability to flooding with sea level, and also tsunami. You're at about seven and a half feet on top of the high water level. It requires extensive dewatering, limited site access, and there's, they mentioned there's, we have space for two, the pump station itself and the generator, but I think odor control be on the other side. And then it really takes a portion of the beach up, so the recommendation was to expand and place. We also looked at Irvine Company, but they had plans for restaurants, so that limited that space as well. But really kind of focusing on site plan number two, this is the same site that we, same-sized pump station that we have, that we're posing, and a generator set. You see it impacts the shoreline, you have to do a seawall, so it just doesn't really fit in this location. In 2016, OC SAN wrote a letter to Bayside Village Marina expressing interest in the land. They said that location was not acceptable, so then they were kind enough to reach back to us and saying, "We'll give you two other locations, the northeast corner and the south location." I already discussed the south location, but the northeast corner, we actually spent a lot of time on that. We spent four years. We did the EIR, we did preliminary design, we did design, and we were working with them. We had a couple of options for microtunneling. But in 2019, they just abandoned that location, and then we started having discussions with them in the summer of August 2019. There's some correspondents going back and forth and discussing expanding place. They gave us a footprint, we did a preliminary layout, and then we all agreed on the property layout. And this is the layout. As they mentioned, the access road, and then the green outline is the outline of the pump station. We have not changed that size of the pump station. That was provided to us, and we've been able to fit everything within that. And the access road, it can really go anywhere. They can move it really any direction they want to go to. All we care is we need an access road, both for construction and the final. We couldn't agree on the price. We did mediation unsuccessful with that, so then we then did the, through our board, adopted resolution necessity for condemnation. We have the legal right, the property has it September 2023, and they have withdrawn the deposit of probable compensation, so really effectively waves our right to dispute the taking. And regarding the size, I'll demonstrate that. Here's the existing pump station and the overall footprint. And as you see, this, to actually build, you have to build the new before you could demolish the old. It's actually just very tight within there, very restricted. But once that's built, we'll then build odor control. Where the entrance is coming in, right after that is where the bridge actually starts ramping up, so it would be very difficult to get into the site, so you really need that location to actually successfully get into there. And we also have space for bypass pumping. Generally, that's needed if we have to do work in the wet well, or there's some major event that occurs, such as when we replaced the valves in the past. You saw this layout here of the pump station. Here's access, really is critical for the access road. We're only looking at coming off of East Coast Highway for chemical trucks, which is about twice a month. And to get a little bit of response regarding the draft alternative entry they have, we do have connect, our discussions with Caltrans, we did reach out to them early just to see their thoughts on this. They actually really said it's not acceptable. It's in their right-of-way, and they just said they would not accept this. The other challenge is, is that the access road does interfere with the actual shoring, so we have to push the pump station out in order for us to actually use the access road for construction. We eliminate the OCTA bus turnout, and then just for construction, it just really doesn't work. We have to go, need further access to keep the nice traffic flow for the excavation period. And then the final, when the pump station's in operation, here's some examples of our trucks that we bring in for service. You can pull in, but leaving, I guess I'll walk through this a little bit further. One item is the fire truck access. They need 20 feet. There's only 12 feet here. Again, the bus stop, and then for when we pull out, we would actually be going on top of the sidewalk. And there's no space for any landscaping. And just regarding the massive size of this pump station, I mean, obviously, it's, it takes 50% of the flow from Newport Beach, it does require some size. We have the wet well, the pumps below grade, and then the electrical room above, and this just kind of gives you an idea, that's the existing electrical room. We only have four feet between the pumps. That's not much room for our staff to work in. We do have that U-turn of the pipe that comes around, so we can go back out to the front of the pump station. We did have 27 feet high, and then we went down to 23 at the request from Bayside Village Marina. But what's really driving that up is we designed it so you can withstand the tsunami, so it's increasing two and a half feet above the existing height. We're kind of comparing the old versus the new. The ramp is really hydraulic ramp. That's required for us to have a self-cleaning wet well to do less maintenance at that facility, and the 12 and a half feet is really the U-turn of the pipe. So the overall width would be similar if we went with the standard pump station size. And the electrical room, a little bit wider. We have a separate staircase for confined space, or, I mean, area classification issues, and then also restroom. Generator's bigger, just because the size is a little bigger. The one we have now is too small. And architecturally, I mean, our mission is always to meet the needs of the city in which we do our work in. Here's examples we have now. We've kind of went through it. They didn't bring up the architecture, but we could actually, as your staff has said, we could modify the facade, exterior of it to match whatever that happens in the future. Originally, the Bayside Village Marina was gonna do coastal Mediterranean, now it's more coastal. We saw some confidential plans. We're not sure exactly what they're gonna do. We saw some confidential plans, we're not sure exactly what they're going to do, but we're willing to match whatever they're going to do in the future. And their size can be a lot bigger, it's probably another 50% bigger, so our facilities will be in the shadows of their facility. Regarding truck traffic, we're going to follow the EIR, there's be times where there's more traffic than others, depending on what type of work we're doing in terms of excavation work, or bringing pipe on when we're doing the microtunneling. And in terms of long-term, we pretty much expect one truck a day, we put our eyes on it every, every day that we want to see the pump station, making sure everything is, is going well, but we'll occasionally bring in other equipment, such as a combination vacuum, sewer cleaning vehicle, or if we have to replace a pump, or there's an emergency situation. So normally, it's, we allowed to have up to 15 vehicles per week, but normally, it's going to be normally one per day.
Sorry, can I ask real quickly, when we're, when we're using the term trucks, you're talking about F-150s or F-250s, or are you talking about bigger trucks than that?
I'm referring just to the F-150, 250 for a daily operation. We'll just bring in larger trucks if we have to replace a pump, put it on the back of a truck and take it to, get it replaced.
Okay, thanks.
And really, where we're at in the project, the SEQA has been approved, as staff has mentioned. Bayside Village Marina has agreed with our property size, we have the legal right to the property, and then staff through Planning Commission, Public Works staff have supported us in this project. And then really what's left is just compensation for the property. Thank you. Oh, and chemicals will be twice a month, in terms of the front access.
Understood. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If, I'm, I'm just going to hold questions up here until we're done with the rebuttal. Appellant, if you have, you have five minutes on rebuttal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, John Erskine again for Bayside. So one of the issues we've heard about from staff, and we've heard about throughout the last several years, is that this is the end of the useful life, and I didn't have time to, to go into that, but we, we commissioned Civil Tech Engineering as a subcontractor to Fusco Engineering. Civil Tech has expertise in building pump stations. The pump station was upgraded significantly in 2014, and they didn't mention that and haven't mentioned it very often. It was upgraded for a reason. It was upgraded so that its useful life would be another 15 to 20 years. And one thing that occurs to me is, there's probably a, who knows, it's not quantified, but there's a 1% chance of this so-called catastrophic sewage spill in the harbor. There's a 100% chance that this project is going to severely disrupt the residents of this community, the very center of Newport Beach, for the next five to six years, and it's certainly going to disrupt our client. There's a 100% chance of that. There will be a 54 launch, but some of the information, we've got new information that really bears on, on the addendum and SEQA. I'm not going to get too legal today because none of you want to hear that, but because we're taking depositions leading to the, you know, dealing with the eminent domain part of this, we found out that there's a 54-foot launch pit that's going to be necessary somewhere around the pump station. That's for, a four-story deep launch pit that will be there for some portion of a year in order to microtunnel under Coast Highway, under the Irvine Company property, under the, the BBM property, under, 20 feet under the Newport Harbor Channel. It has a, according to testimony we've got, it's got a 50% chance of failure. They're going to have to actually either build or acquire from somewhere in the United States a boring machine that can bore a 72-inch tunnel under the Newport Channel. It's, it's, it's a big deal. We didn't mention that location three is the, we think is one of the best options in the northeast corner of the property. The city and BBM worked on this. Ultimately, your, your staff, and we've got formal comment letters, that because of the gravity sewer line going over towards the Soul Restaurant and Tavern across Coast Highway, that there were infrastructure reasons why that alternative didn't work as proposed by the Sand District. There was also a lot of terms in the potential exchange of properties where OC Sand was not going to clean up the toxics down to the, the ultimate level, whereas they wanted our property complete all the way to the center of the earth. So there was toxic issues, and they're the ones who've been using chemicals, not, not We, I'm not going to go into the eminent domain, the Alston and Byrd letter was not even worth commenting on. We, there's, there's no, there's no waiver of the right to comment on this approval. You guys have ultimate authority to do whatever you want, and I've already addressed the issue of whether or not they're, you know, they're on the verge of a catastrophic sewage spill. The other thing about the addendum, just real quickly, is if you look at the two mitigation measures, and I just want to say this for the record, mitigation measures need to be enforceable through permit conditions. SEQA requires an EIR or an addendum to be both enforceable and effective. There is, TRA 1 says there will be a disruption, if there is a disruption to traffic circulation, it shall be minimized to the greatest extent feasible. TRA 1 also says bicycle trails shall remain open to the greatest extent feasible. Both of those provisions violate the recent SEQA holding in King and Gardner Farms versus County of Kern, which is a 2020 case. And, Michael, I don't know if there's anything else you want to say? I think that was it.
All right, thank you. Before we go to questions, we'll go first to public, public comments on this item? Do we have any public comments?
Mr. Mayor, councilors and city staff, my name is Heath Clark, I'm President of the Bayside Village Homeowners Association. The Bayside Village community's been an integral part of Newport Beach for over 60 years, and our HOA represents the residents of about 270 home sites, with over $150 million in assets, and we're the only community contiguous with this development. On behalf of our residents, we do understand the upgrades required for the city infrastructure, whatever they may ultimately be, but we're very concerned about the impact of this entire project on our community. I therefore respectfully request that the city in conjunction with the county take all reasonable precautions towards mitigating the impact of this project on our community, including pedestrian and bike safety, traffic congestion, fumes, noise, dust and debris, as well as the ecological impact of the tunneling under the Back Bay. I further ask that our association be notified in advance of the occasionally planned major disruptions so that we can advise residents accordingly. I appreciate you taking the concerns of the Bayside Village community into consideration, and on behalf of our residents, would like to take this opportunity to thank the Planning Commission and city staff for their considerable work already invested in this complex project. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Mayor O'Neill, Members of the Council, my name is Jim Mosher. I passed by this location on my bicycle on the sidewalk in front of the existing pump station on my way from and to your meetings. And it does seem to me like a very large expansion of a fairly small facility that we have now. The main concern about it is aesthetic. Standing alone, it is impacting views considerably. It's very difficult to assess the long-term impact of that because we don't have a clear picture of what the surrounding landowner, the Baobab, the Bayside Village Marina landowner is planning to do with their portion of the property. But I would point out that we are a city that values transparency, not only in council meetings, but also somewhat in architecture. We don't allow private homeowners to put walls along the streets that they're adjacent to to hide the buildings behind them. And so as a council, you might want to question why we're expanding walls along Pacific Coast Highway. I don't think aesthetically, it's particularly pleasing to see a building hidden behind a wall, it's like something secretive is going on back there. I don't think in this case there is. I don't think the wall is protecting the facility from sound from the highway, I don't think they need that. I don't think they need to hide what they're doing from us, so I would think some sort of open work fencing around it would provide the security they need with less visual impact on the people going by there. And as somebody who goes by there, it would be very advantageous as part of this project to widen the sidewalk. This is technically part of the Back Bay Loop, many of the bicycle riders go in the street, but they can use the sidewalk, and pedestrians use that. There's currently conflicts because the bus station there and so forth, so widening the sidewalk and reducing the wall would both be beneficial to the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public speakers? All right, we'll bring it back. Our policy, our city council policies allow the applicant a couple of minutes to respond to any, or do it, provide any rebuttal to evidence presented, which includes public comments. If you'd like a couple of minutes, you're welcome to have it.
I'll respond a couple of items.
Go ahead.
In terms of the useful life, talk about what was done in 2014, we really just have done some minor upgrades. We added a fifth pump, that was just, we had one pump that, or two pumps required for wet weather, we added an additional pump for resiliency for that reason. None of the other pumps were modified, and then we've replaced valves and some other things. We haven't done any major upgrades to extend the life of that. If we would have done that, we wouldn't have be replacing it now. In terms of the SEQA and regarding the microtunneling, we did reach out to the Harbor Master and the Fish and Wildlife, their recommendation was to do microtunneling versus dredging just for the impact of the bay. We've had experts, both from the consultant as well as a third-party expert, look at the, the microtunneling, making sure we're doing all the right things, we looked at all the risks and did some serious evaluation of that. And then regarding, they mentioned the northeast corner, I think we were at the northeast corner, we wouldn't have gone to the expanded place if that would have moved forward, so those are my responses on that.
There was some mention of SEQA, and it appears to be an argument that certain mitigation measures were no longer valid based on new case. Feasibility conditions are, you know, well accepted in SEQA, but more importantly, under the SEQA guidelines, let's see, 15231, an EIR is concussively presumed to comply with SEQA for a responsible agency unless it's either judged to be in violation, which is the opposite here, trial court found that it complied with SEQA, or that it met the grounds under Section 15162 for a subsequent EIR. And there are some provisions there, none of them are shown here. Substantial changes have been made to the project or to circumstances, or new information of substantial importance, and the, and the responsible agency, the city council here, would have to find, based on substantial evidence in the whole record, that one of these factors have met. Substantial evidence means facts or expert opinions or reasonable assumptions that are in the record. There's nothing that was, we heard tonight, that was actually in the record.
Go ahead and finish your thoughts.
So that's, and there was a concerning point about the fact that city council can do whatever it wants. That's, that's just not the law. Government actions have to have a rational basis, can't be arbitrary or capricious, and here it's relevant that a trial court considered these same arguments, found none of them had any basis, none of them set a ground to set aside the decision, and that project did not violate SEQA, or the Coastal Act, or the local coastal plans, or the planned community development plan that they're referring to as their approval. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we ask who he was, just so we can state his name for the record?
Oh yeah, that's probably, that's probably a good call.
Could have started there. Matt Riker Shammer, partner at Alston and Byrd, representing OC Sand.
Oh, you're the one who called him mayor, got it. Your letter, yeah, your letter promoted Mr. Stapleton to mayor. I'm, I'm kidding, go ahead.
My name is Robert Thompson, I'm the General Manager of OC Sand, and I just want to say, for the public comment, OC Sand is committed to working with residents in every step of the construction that's upcoming. We have a fantastic outreach program honed over years with city cooperation. We will keep the residents thoroughly apprised of what's going on before things happen, so thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that. All right. We'll go ahead, questions from council before we do any, any discussion or comments, but do we have any questions of the applicant or appellant directly? Mr. Wagon.
I guess I'll tee it up.
Oh, I'm sorry, do you have any questions? But I, I just need to know because I'm going to close the public here.
Oh, yeah, no, I just.
Okay, all right, I'm going to, oh yeah, go ahead. Councilmember Climen.
I just wanted to get further clarification on the mayor's question about the trucks. You answered the question about the regular maintenance, and then there was sort of a comment that alluded to another delivery that happens less regularly, and it may or may not be the trucks that were in those photos from the appellant, so I just want to clarify that. Will that continue, is my question, in the, in the new facility? The larger trucks along PCH backing up?
Yeah, the option, the plan is now to have the chemical trucks come in twice a month on the front, but all of the F-150s, our staff trucks, will come into the access road, as well as any major, like a crane or anything else is required to remove equipment, like a pump or anything else. So just twice a month will be on the.
So the large trucks that we see on Pacific Coast Highway currently, that will continue? That activity and those trucks backing up along Coast Highway?
Twice a month, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I'll come back to Councilmember Wagon for the questions.
Just for my knowledge, I can ask questions about the appellant and applicant at this point?
Absolutely.
Okay, okay. So there were a couple items here that I jotted down for OC Sand. You know, have the standards changed over the years to make that footprint be a larger size from that 4,000 to 14,000 footprint? You know, I noticed there were some vaults, some other type of equipment that wasn't just, you know, shown as building, but underneath where you would need to do that. So there's no really workaround to condense and, and lower the size of the footprint. I've heard some of the appellant ask, can the odor control be located to another site? I know you've stated that, that the other sites are in a tsunami zone, you know, what is that difference in height? It still seems right along the coast there, so I think any type of tsunami is going to impact either location. So just kind of curious, some thoughts there as far as, one, when it comes to the, to the size, the 4,000 and now 14,000, is there any way to consolidate at all? I've heard from the appellant say that, you know, you were interested in having three-point turns located inside that facility, so that adds to some size needed, but that's kind of my initial questions on, because there's really two issues at hand, it's the size parameter of the location, and then this access road, and these are where my questions will kind of come into play when we decide on what we ultimately want to do, but, you know, start off kind of by, can the site itself be consolidated? Can odor control be relocated to another site, as the, the appellant has said that there could be some other alternative sites for moving that so that this location is not as big?
Sure. Regarding the overall size, just because we're, we have a new hydraulic standard, since the 1966 standards, it's changed in terms of hydraulic, so it requires that slope, so the overall wet well does get wider. So that's the footprint you see now is us designing for that new standard. In terms of odor control, we currently only have chemicals, we're going to add local odor control, so we have a foul air system, so that does create a little bit more space regarding that, and we just try to be good neighbors, so we are adding that additional odor control. But really, to build the first pump station, delete the, demo the next one, that's kind of really with the spaces. I mean, there's not that much space between the two locations, so it might look, at the end of the day, you have more space because of the odor control. It does allow us to also build a new one, like 70 years down the road, but really the access and everything else is, was kind of setting up that, you know, like the, the entrance coming in, kind of sets up that overall footprint.
And as far as that odor control's location, does it have to be on that site, or could it move a little further into another part of their, their parcel that they own in order to accommodate perhaps a smaller footprint? And then put that odor control in another area that would be less impactful to their overall plan? See, some of the challenges that the applicant has is, once this gets built, it lessens their ability to build their project that they want to build in the future. And all of us here, we drive along Dover all the time, and we look over there, and it's, no offense to the landholder, it's a dump, and it's an eyesore to the community. And it's an eyesore to the community, and they, these guys want to make it look nice and put in a mixed-use plan. I sat on the planning commission when this came through, and it's, when I first got on, thanks to a couple, thanks to, well, no, none of the council members are here anymore that appointed me that planning commission. But it's been that long. So I've been aware of this project for some time. So we want to, we want to see that in the community get improved, and here's a landowner that's willing to, to take that risk. But there are some impacts here that affect how that will look in the future. So have, has OC SAN studied perhaps a relocation to the odor control, maybe down the, I think they might have proposed under the bridge, or a ways away, but not too far away? And then could that, could that work? Have, do you have any other pump locations, any other stations similar to this that have a pump, an odor control a little bit further down the way?
Really, all of our odor control systems are located onsite. For the fowler system, it needs to be really as close as possible, because you're pulling the air out of the wet well. So that, that needs to be close.
How, how close, though? Like, I'm looking at the site plan here, and this location that they propose isn't that far away. Yes, it's in a separate facility, but is, how close, I guess, does it have to be?
Yeah, that's true. So we have to have an easement to get our foul air piping underground. We need power over to that location, so.
But that would be working with the landowner, though, right?
We would. I mean, I think the chemicals, you could potentially move that, but the reason why that looks so big in terms of chemicals is we're trying to hide the tanks. Just because we have access around it. If we could, if we removed that structure, you would have a smaller-looking footprint, I guess.
Sure.
But I think the fowler needs to be close. I mean, the chemicals need to be somewhere, but they have to then feed back in and go into the wet well, in terms of chemical injection.
Look, I, I understand the needs of this project. There's a significant amount of waste that's moving along Newport Beach, and we need to get it out. We need to prevent it from falling into the bay. So, you know, there's a significant need. So, you know, this council is, is wrapped around a pretty significant discussion here. So I just want to make sure that we do, you know, cover all the bases when we're discussing this. When it comes to the access road, I'm looking in the packet on 13232, and really, all I see is future access road that kind of circles, kind of looks like a racetrack. But I don't really see all these other discussions in my packet and maybe staff. Is there a section that I'm not looking at in the packet? But, you know, I've seen the applicant, the appellant puts in this roadway here of how the service road's going to look. And then the applicant's presentation also had that. But then, in their presentation, they did say that that service road can be anywhere. But, you know, obviously, as it comes into a future proposal, you know, that anywhere could be, you know, when we were on the planning commission, we just did entitlements on the project. We didn't approve where buildings were. We weren't approving where parking spaces would be. So it would be incumbent on the landowner in the future, if this goes through, to wrap their project around how that service road's going to be. But obviously, a service road needs to come in a little further up Bayside as the applicant or the appellant's description shows. So coming through there in that yellow mark, it, it does significantly impact the way that their future designs are going to be on how people come into that project, residents or businesses or, you know, visitors, and then how SAN comes into that. I, I do want to kind of go back to the statement that was made related to, the appellant's had a proposal, the bike lane here with the entrance lane. And I think you said that you've shopped it off to Caltrans and to OCTA, and, and they said they weren't interested, or they wouldn't approve it. Who at Caltrans were you in connection with on that particular?
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Cindy Mura. I'm a project manager at OC SAN. And I did speak with Caltrans on Monday morning with a person by the name of Cameron Mazhar. He's the chief of design, and he's who we've been coordinating with on this project.
Gotcha. So it didn't make its way up to district director, then, just staff?
It did not.
Dave, could you come up just for a second? Sorry to put you on the fly here. So I believe the appellant had sent a proposal, and I believe this proposal, to one of our engineers. Yeah, that's fine. Something easy. To Brad Summers, I think. And Brad had a chance to kind of reply back with some comments. To me, if, looking at this just kind of primary, and that's the problem I think this council is faced with, is, you know, we're making a decision on something we really haven't studied too, too much. I mean, this is pretty relatively brief. Yes, we were briefed by sanitation district, and we were briefed by the applicant. I'm sorry, the appellant. But, you know, these are really important decisions for the future of one, the city, but for the future of waste movement out. And I think we are all good stewards of that. But the plan here, it does seem like maybe OCTA could essentially, if this, if this dark line that I'm looking at, and I'm not sure if we can maybe pull it up here, just so that you could see it, and I'm sure you might have already seen it, but it seems like it almost served OCTA to pick up their patrons by pulling in instead of on this, on PCH, where if you drive that often, it will, they have a little turnout, but nothing significant. Yes, they will be, you know, OCSD will have the, you know, the rights to it and will be there more often, or not that often, but will, if they're there, then OCTA would know not to, to pull in and get in the way. But other times of the day, it could be a joint benefit there if that were researched by OCTA and studied by OCTA. And then as far as, you know, our, our look and how much extra roadway that would provide to, say, pedestrians and bicyclists, as Mr. Moser had mentioned, that could actually widen. It seems that that is beneficial. But again, I'm, I'm not really a traffic engineer, and, and I haven't studied this beyond the few moments that we've been up here. But perhaps you could speak to what Mr. Summers' hesitation was, or if we really have researched it enough to really make a decision on that?
Thank you, Councilmember Wigan. And I don't have our traffic engineers' comments in front. I did have Brad Summers, our traffic engineer, look at this when we were, presented this from the applicant, I assume the appellant. He did, and I don't know if planning has that, he wrote a quick memo over to the planner. But what he did tell me, there's concerns in this. One, first of all, it's obvious it's Caltrans. Caltrans is very standard-oriented, and this is non-standard material here. We really have to get their approval and permission on something like this. You are interjecting a couple more movements that, a conflict with bicyclists and pedestrians, because you're crossing the sidewalk twice, twice, which is not there now. It's not quite a driveway. That would be a concern. The other thing is, you mentioned OCTA, they do have a bus stop there. I, I can't speak for OCTA. I'd only say they highly, probably wouldn't go with this option, because you're taking them off the street, they need consistency. If the SAN district happens to have trucks parked there, what does the bus do? Does it stop in the middle of the highway in the lane, or, or how do they do that? So there are, there are some obvious problems with this. I guess the bottom line is what Mr. Summers told me is, he would prefer the original concept of how they're doing it versus this option for access to the facility, on just a real quick conceptual look at it.
Do you think there's any other ideas that could get the service vehicles that will be used in the future? Not the creation of the, the location, because that's a different topic. The land hasn't been developed yet. But, you know, when the land is developed and what we're looking at in the future, you know, it does have some impacts. Is there, are there any other, you know, ideas than what, what we're looking at here? Because you need enough of a gap, you need enough entrance on Bayside. I'm looking at this document here that the appellant had, but, you know, you got to pull into Bayside, and then you got to turn into the property. You can't have that too soon, because you'd be impacting cars coming in and out of that street. So, you know, can this be constructed in a way that is beneficial to SAN and beneficial to the, you know, or at least very limited impact? Because this design I'm seeing here seems very impactful, unless they are, you know, they're currently entering through the street. You know, that, so what's, I don't, I don't know. I'm, I'm not, again, a traffic engineer, but I do see some type of problem.
We've met with both the property owner and the SAN district many times over the years and looked at various options. Speaking for probably the traffic folks, the best option would be to come, not come off Coast Highway, but come in from the other side, because it impacts the highway the less. That's our biggest concern. That, that piece of Coast Highway there is one of our busiest stretches. If I go off memory, I think we have about 64,000 cars a day on that highway. So any kind of interruption, it, it could be problematic, particularly around the rush hour times. So it would be better if you could access off the other side with most of the vehicles coming off, whatever access road they determine with the property owner, and limit the amount they come off Coast Highway. They, they do have a driveway there, and as I understand it from the OCTA, they, they, OCSD, they need to bring in a couple trucks. Not sure about the size, if they can change the size on chemicals, probably twice a month off Coast Highway is what I'm understanding.
Have there been any accidents or incidences with any track accidents or anything with SAN or that location of pulling in and out? Like, what's the standard procedure when they come in? Do they block off that lane and then, you know, it's probably a couple-man crew, right? Want to stop the traffic?
I'm going to have to turn that over to the SAN district. They operate that, we don't get involved in the operation when they use their driveway there.
But we've never really seen any reports of accidents at the current location?
I'm not aware of any. There could be, and maybe the SAN district can speak to that. I, I just don't have that knowledge.
And when they do go, do we notice any impacts to traffic?
Well, they, they don't stick out in traffic, I know, when I drive by there. Because as you know, that, that is a pretty restricted area, particularly as you get into the mornings and evening commutes, it really backs up in there. I, I don't recognize, I don't think they have permission to block a lane. That'd be a special permit with Caltrans.
But when they're pulling in and backing out, do they have to block traffic, right?
I'm going to have to ask the applicant.
I guess where I'm going with this is, you know, based on what this proposal shows, is if the landowner would be willing to shed some of their land to get, to make this be a better entrance and exit even more, maybe that would be where the service entrance is, if it's an easy flow-in, flow-out. I mean, it's not that much that the, the report says. It's, you know, about 15 times, but, you know, there's potential for larger vehicles. But the way that that road impacts their future development plans, it is, it makes for a harder project for them to build something nice. And that, that's what ultimately I think this council wants, is that parcel there to be something nice. And if that hamstrings their ability to develop that, well, then we'll just always have a parcel that's got trucks and RVs and waste.
This option that was thrown out recently would need further review, obviously. And I can't speak for the SAN district, but I, it looks like that road moves into their easement area, which could affect their wet wells and, and their operations onsite. So they'd have to comment on that. What I did see is a lot, and I think the, both the owner and the SAN district recognized there's going to be onsite circulation. And what I've heard is they would be using the onsite circulation, whatever it is, whatever configuration is, to access their site. So I don't know if that would cause a disruption to development. I haven't seen that. But there's, there's some way to probably work that out if the two folks would come together on that. This option would definitely take some more, I'd have to get the SAN district to look at it. I don't know how this would impact, if it would work with them. There are some other options, maybe, I don't know how their chemicals come, if they're on 18-wheelers. Maybe it could come more frequently on smaller trucks, which then could be accessed from the inside and not from Coast Highway. Again, I haven't discussed that with the SAN district and their operations. I think you just need, some of your questions would need some more analysis by them, the odor control and things like that, how they would do that.
Right. And I, and I just go back to the necessity of this. I, I get where SAN wants to build this. I, I, I want this to be successful, and it's a necessity for our city. So I'm just trying to figure out how the grand scheme of, and Councilmember Stapleton's been pretty heavy on Lower Castaways Park and wants to see that area. He says it's, and he's true, and he's right, that it is the epicenter of our city, the founding of our city. So we're right in the, the heart of our, our city, so we want to see it successful there. And we have landowners who are willing to do that. So it, it, it's not pretty where we're at, and that, that's the only challenge that we have. In my mind, is the size and the location, and then with the, the service road and access. But I'd, I'd like to hear from my colleagues. I'm sorry that I rambled on about it, but it seems really important that we get this one right.
Got it. So still in the, the question phase, council, or Mayor pro tem Stapleton.
Yeah, I don't know, Dave, if this is for you or for Mark, but the appellant made a comment that the city was pretty reluctant on the northeast corner option. Is that true? Are we against that? Does that not work for us?
I don't know the circumstance on that. Mike Senicori and Jim Houlihan were working on that. I'd been early in the project, and I was excited when I saw that option. It looked like both the landowner and the district came to some conclusion on something. I don't know why it was turned down. We'd have to maybe, maybe even the SAN district knows. We might have said there's some concerns, but they could relook at it. I mean, piping is piping, and if we're going to tunnel and move things, depending on how much a problem is, I, I just don't know the details of why we'd be concerned with the connections there.
Okay. And then question to the applicant, construction we've heard could be five years. Obviously, it's going to be a massive construction effort in that area. Do you really see this as a five-year shut-down, one lane on PCH? Or how does the, how does the construction look on your end?
In terms of construction on East Coast Highway, we are going to shut down a lane, I think it's a total of about 16 weeks. There's a short week period of 11 weeks and a couple two-week periods the following year.
A lot of the construction is going to take place on the actual site, not disrupting?
Coming in off the shared easement. All that work will be coming there, and we'll just be doing, do the, there's some front utility work we have to do and driveway access, so that will be done during those short period of time.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Grant.
So a lot of what I was going to ask was actually asked in the lengthy ask by Councilmember Wigan. But I also have concerns about the access road and just discrediting the possibility. I do respect the experts that are in the room and that have looked at this on the city side, on the project side, and, I mean, on the property owner's side and on the project side. But I'm interested in, you know, that possibility. It seems like that is a meeting place, from what I heard even in the presentation today, that if we could adjust the road somehow to not bisect the property. And I respect what you're saying, Dave. You know, if, if it's done, and it does sound like you're pretty convinced. But I think that, you know, that was what I had, after meeting with SAN and with the property owner, and that's what I had encouraged, is that they come to a meeting of minds on that together and not leave it to the council to negotiate how the actual, you know, footprint of this development's going to look like, what, what it's going to look like. So I would just ask if you think that extending this process would be fruitful, or if really we have vetted that entirely? The, the idea of the road fronting on Coast Highway as opposed to bisecting the property?
Yes, my answer is, I, I can't completely throw it out. There might be some merit there, depending on, maybe it can be further back, maybe there's two gates, maybe it's kind of some other configuration. The key thing we have to remember here is, the city doesn't control that. That's state highway, and it's really going to be a state decision. We could input it, we could, we could say we like it, but we're not going to permit it. It's going to be a state permit. The other thing is really between the two parties. They've struggled, that I can see, to come up with a common consensus. So if they need, if the SAN district says we can make this work, but we're going to need some more space to make it work, can they get that? Can their areas be juggled around to make all their deliveries and work? We'd have to check with OCTA. I, again, I would doubt they would take a bus turnout like that. They like to be on the street, on the corner. They would probably not, I mean, they could do it, I didn't say, it's just so unusual. I haven't seen anything like that where they do such a thing. So that's, a lot of variables that we don't have answers to, and it's going to take some time to probably get that.
One more question, because I was, I didn't, I don't know if I heard correctly. Did you mention that you thought that the, if the road was, as we see it in the depiction from, you know, this yellow piece on the road, if it were there, did you say that that would be a shared road for the development from the property owner and, that wouldn't be a private road for SAN district, right? That would be a shared road that would be used by residents ultimately that live there? Or is that a private road?
So as I understand it, and again, I, this is, it would be a private road with some level of easement. It's how the property owner wants to set up his development. The whole thing could be private, and he could give an easement to the SAN district. They'll need some sort of internal circulation for deliveries, trucks, fire access, things like that. And I think what the SAN district laid does is, they will take any of that, they'll use that road, whatever circumventious route they do, for their access also. So there's some level of internal circulation that will be required. It doesn't have to be public. It would just be, and again, that would be what they're purchasing, is some level of easement to use a future road.
But we're going to have a shared road there, in any event, that's going to accommodate
That's gonna accommodate the property owner and the SAN District?
Again, not knowing what the final output is on with the property owner, how he wants to lay things out, but he's gonna have some level of internal circulation. You're gonna have to drive to these buildings, use homes or something.
All right. Any other questions up here? All right. So I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing at this time, and then we'll open it up for discussion up here. Would anyone like to start? No? All right, I will.
I guess, you wanna go? You got it.
Sure. Yeah. So the, so I suppose the issue is first, just making sure that we know what's in front of us, because this one's complicated. It's incredibly complicated, given the amount of litigations already existed on this and the amount of current litigation already existing on this. It's, there was, you know, there were court rulings in this, there were discussions in this. We had, frankly, I thought it was a, it was a well-briefed appeal. And then, you know, I thought it was a, I thought it was, it was professional all around. So I appreciate everyone's discussions on this one. So when we're looking at this and trying to figure out, you know, what's in front of us, which is sort of, which is gonna be the point on how to, how to decide this, the question's gonna be what was appealed and what are the legal bases for us to be discussing this? And then going through the findings on the resolution, trying to decide whether the findings, we can make the findings. And so I spent, spent time with the appellant to make sure I understood what the concerns were, what the history was, what this was. Spent time reading through the entire packet and you got a lot of, a lot of lawyers working on this one. And the truth was, I was trying to look at this, I know it's de novo and I was trying to find a way. I just, I dislike, I dislike eminent domain, generally speaking. And so when I was, when I saw how much eminent domain was going on, and I recognize that there's still a lot of litigation going on in this, I started frankly with the view that it's not, it's not great for us to be seeing this much eminent domain against a private home or a private property owner in our, in our community. And I suppose that, that discussion unfortunately is not in front of us. It's really the discussion that's gonna be going on in the litigation. And frankly, I hope the appellant is, is actually quite successful in that, given, given everything that's going on here. That said, on the discussion about what the findings are and what the appeal is, you know, I was, I was looking at the ingress egress discussion and I appreciate the discussion on that, Dave, and I appreciate the fairly rapid response that we had here. And then on the traffic plan discussion, before I kinda jump on that, Simone, the, we had homeowners come forward and ask us to make sure that we've got, you know, we'll have a good, robust traffic plan. Would you mind assuring just, you know, how that process works for any, any project of any size in our city that we, you know, we expect and require traffic management plans like that?
Certainly. Typically, a project of this size has a construction management plan and within that construction management plan will outline the requirements of the, their traffic requirements, their haul routes, and their requirement for noticing. So it's not unusual for a project this size to have a construction management plan that would outline all those requirements from, from a traffic service. And that traffic safety plan will be submitted to Public Works for review prior to permitting.
Got it. So if we're not doing the right, if it doesn't seem like it's going well, just come let us know, okay? Because there's a lot of requirements on this one if construction starts up. So anyway, coming back on this one, the, looking through the resolutions, reading through all of the staff report and the, and the attachments, and then looking at the, looking at the findings themselves, I think that, there's not, there's nothing in the findings that I can find, I can find inconsistency with. And I tried, I really did. So I'm, I'm of the opinion at this point, going through and looking at the findings, looking at what's only in front of us, that, that we have, we have the ability and probably, and, and we should be moving forward with this and denying the appeal. And I say that with a heavy heart again, because I, I really didn't want to, given the, given, given where we are. But I do recognize as well though, how important the pump station is going to be to our community. I do appreciate all of the work that has gone into this. I wish we were at a different place, and I know everyone in, I know everyone here does too. But what's in front of us is what's in front of us. And so on that alone, on just what the appeal is, my inclination at least right now is to deny the appeal. Councilmember Kleiman.
Thank you. So I understand the need for the replacement of this aging system. I won't comment on the dispute between the property owner and OC SAN, although I too am not pleased with the use of eminent domain by OC SAN. Personally, I would have liked to have seen the northeast corner be the, the location for this, but as Mayor O'Neill has already described, that's not what's before us tonight. For this application and appeal though, in my opinion, I am having a hard time making the findings, specifically findings D and E, due to the conflicts along PCH that even our director of Public Works has talked about, or they're not ideal. And I was just, happened to just be driving there and sitting at that light on Pacific Coast Highway in Bayside Drive myself a couple of days ago and witnessed one of those trucks backing up along PCH with a cyclist and a pedestrian and, you know, you can imagine all the potential for, for things to happen and go wrong there. So if we're going to go through the exercise of putting in a new facility, I for one would like to see those things worked out in a way that makes more sense. I also have long-term concerns about the, certainly the construction management, but, but also the potential for issues if there's some emergency work or, you know, some, something that happens with the system under that bridge. Those are, those are my concerns and comments. I am also though, open to, if the parties are willing or interested, giving them a short extension to come back and work with our staff on an alternative, if that's even an option at this point. I know you're really far down the line and you've had many, many conversations already. Just leave it there.
Just real quickly, Councilmember Kleiman, because I wanna make sure I'm following, when you said, which, which findings were the ones?
Finding D, site plan and layout of buildings, parking areas.
Which page are you on, so I can make sure?
1350, thank you.
Got it.
And finding E, which is on 1351. Functional aspects of site development, hazard to the public convenience, health, interest safety, general welfare of persons residing in the neighborhood, et cetera.
Got, okay, got it. So you're referencing the planning commission resolution? I see. All right. Thank you. Councilmember Staple, or I'm sorry, Mayor Protim Stapleton.
Yeah, I just wanna echo those two comments. Sympathetic, I hear you, I feel you. There's nothing I want more than this site to be redeveloped. And I cycle up and down PCH all the time and the fact that that is a, a storage yard right now is just mind-boggling to me. So I hope you guys continue to move forward. I know it's been almost a decade now you've had approval, so I hope you guys continue with that. I can't find the, I can't find the findings either. And if there was a way you guys could work together and put it on the northeast corner, I'm certain our staff would find a way to help you guys make that happen, because not part of this discussion, but I would love to see this off of PCH and in the corner of the lot and certainly would, I think, be better for everybody in the community. But clearly, this project needs to continue to move forward. We need to make sure that, you know, we've got clean water in the harbor and make sure nothing happens and continue to, you know, push this stuff out of the community. So those are my comments.
All right. Councilmember Wagen.
Just for, maybe staff would be able to help me on this. What is it, you know, if we came back to the table, as Councilmember Kleiman had kinda said, maybe if there were some ability to discuss some of these items or maybe if I wanted to delay this or have this come back to, you know, see if Caltrans could look at a better, look, have a better look at this, maybe go elevate it to District 12 Director or have OCTA look at the bus stop location to see if the, the service road could be more off of PCH in, in a way that doesn't impact traffic, doesn't impact safety, but actually improves so that the, the site isn't impacted in the future. What would, coming back to this look like? Would we have to have another whole hearing with that? Or would we have to, what would that look like if we were to continue this item and see if the two sides could come together on a couple of these items? Which, you know, history is showing probably wouldn't happen, but at least, you know, if we, we open that based on what this directive was of the council?
So, Councilmember Wagen, so if, if the council would like to continue the item and ask the parties to work together to revisit the entrances, I think it'd be incumbent upon having that conversation with the applicant. My concern is, do they have to update and revise the EIR documents? How does it impact the schedule of the project? My understanding too, that from Brad Summers, the traffic engineer, about that accessway off Coast Highway, there's a lot of utilities there.
Right.
So I think there's a feasibility issue and I just don't know how long it'll take to resolve all of that. And from a schedule standpoint, I just don't understand how that, that's gonna affect the schedule with the applicant. And then my other concern is going to be if we have any changes to the project, how does it affect the CEQA documents?
All right. And then as far as the hearing itself, do we just come back and leave it from where we're at today? Or do we have to actually have the appellant and applicant presenting it?
If, if there's substantial amendment to the environmental, we have to go back through the planning commission before we return here to the city council.
Is that correct, Aaron?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And then as far as if, as the mayor stated, you know, the findings can be made, since it's a de novo hearing, does that carry over the comments from the planning commission? Or do we have to make that in our motion as far as what the planning commission had said?
So I think the options here is you could continue the item and bring it back. That's option one. Another option would be you, you basically direct us to come back with a new resolution if there's, if there's, you know, if there's votes for it, that basically upholds the, the appeal. And then, you know, that way the San District can move forward challenging that decision or not. But you'd need a new resolution if you wanted to uphold the appeal. And we'd have to bring that back.
And then, but as far as if we were to side with the applicant, the de novo hearing, we can incorporate the planning commission's request to have the, the site, or not the site, but the building scope to match what the development will look like in the future. I think that's what the planning commission had requested.
Yeah, that is a condition of the approval. I do think that, you know, I think the mayor really laid it out well though. I mean, I think the key issue here is you have a project that's in front of you tonight. You have findings that are being proposed. If you, if you can make those findings, you should deny the appeal. If you can't make those findings, then you direct us to go back and rewrite the resolution.
Opposite. If you can make the finding, I'm sorry, you did say that, I apologize. Yep, yep. I apologize. Councilmember Wagen, were you done? Okay. Councilmember Grant.
Can we just revisit for one minute? Because there seems to be like two separate issues here. Is one where this is cited and two, if it were to be cited in the proposal that we have in front of us, the idea of the access off Coast Highway and how that would impede the project. So we're looking at, in my mind, two different things as we're sitting here, but with respect to the access off of Coast Highway, the existing access that would remain the existing access, we just have a supplemental and a second access, correct? The existing access that we have on Coast Highway remains and, but there'd be another road that would access the property for the other trucks?
As I recall the plan, and I believe it was shown on the screen, they would still have a driveway off Coast Highway. Let's say the approximate location where it is, and they would have less use of that, but they'd still use it. And I heard the primary access would come off the service roads or whatever routing is onsite.
Okay. So I'm just wondering, from like an engineering standpoint, I don't know why we need to keep that existing Coast Highway access. And it seems like the most impacted access, because it seems like the chemical trucks are the ones that are going there, not the little Ford, well, the Ford 150s or 250s or whatever. But why are we not just putting everything back on the other road in that configuration? Why do, we still continue to need the Pacific? Is it because of where those trucks go on the site or why not just eliminate that?
I think OCSD would have to answer that. I think it's the way they're using their vehicles and how they're doing it, they want that access point. And I guess it sounds like the chemical truck, called trucks are long enough, they need that. I've never asked the question, is there another way to bring chemicals in? Can they use a smaller truck like fuel trucks come in two stages or one? Can they bring more deliveries in a smaller truck? Is that something they have the ability to do and then they could use internal access? I'd have to ask the district on that one, on how they could reduce, it sounds like how they could reduce the amount of access off Coast Highway and use more of the internal access.
I'm also assuming maybe the appellant doesn't want big chemical trucks driving through their property?
Well, I understand, but we also have the issue of those trucks on Coast Highway. So I'm just wondering what the rationale is. But...
Yeah, go ahead. Come on up.
Maybe we could probably get smaller chemical trucks if we wanted to. I think we just, we're used to going that access, we're just gonna have it the same way, but I think we could look at ways of having it come off the access road only. We have to talk to the different chemical truck, you know, different chemical manufacturers and what they're able to do, but...
So, the, sorry. The chemical trucks that we're talking about generally come twice a month. We can get smaller trucks, we pay a premium for that. We do the same thing at Crystal Cove Pump Station. The bigger issue we're trying to avoid with a lot of these big trucks is the backing action. Because whenever you have a semi backing up in a very congested space, especially when we're having ongoing maintenance activities, when this is a mature pump station, you know, people walking around and major trucks backing in, into the area is more of a risk issue. It's better to have them be able to pull through and out. You just have less safety interactions without big trucks backing up.
So is that what happens on Coast Highway? They pull through and out? They don't go in? And I thought I heard Councilmember Kleiman say they were backing out.
The, the way the current station is, there's no rear access. So they have to pull onto the rolled curb, onto the sidewalk basically. Again, this station was impacted when Caltrans realigned that freeway in 1980, or, sorry, PCH in 1983. When they moved north, they took the front end of the station away. And so that's why it kind of is what it is. It's compromised from 1983. And we're trying to make sure that this whole thing works out. If you look at the, the idea that was given to us last Thursday, when, when I think I first saw it, they show that lane, it's also going uphill. So that's not a nice flat area. You're also heading up the hill toward the bridge at that point. So it, it's gonna take a lot of work. It's going to delay the project probably years, because you're talking about going backwards with Caltrans and then opening up everything that's been done. All of the, the setbacks are gone, the six to 10 feet of landscaping is not there anymore. So your wall will be very stark. There's a lot of issues, so, sorry.
The only other thing I would mention is, you know, I, after meeting with both parties, I also feel, as many up here have mentioned, that it's unfortunate that we're in this position where we haven't been able to navigate an acceptable, you know, compromise. I think everybody agrees that we need the project. Everybody agrees that we want the property to be developed with something that our community can be proud of. And I've encouraged, you know, from my perspective, that navigation happen with the appellant and the applicant. So if there's a way that we can move forward to, you know, I know that there is a litigation pending, the eminent domain proceedings are going on, but that, I think that the next milestone there is in August or in April. So there is some time, if everybody were amenable, to some sort of compromise where we continue, you know, I think that might be fruitful, other than the fact that we've been doing this for 10 years and we haven't had a compromise. But, not to use a pun, but there's a lot of water under the bridge here. I'd like to see, you know, maybe on the eminent domain, that has to go forward with, you know, the courts. But as far as the project itself and the footprint and what it looks like and how we're gonna access it, it seems like there's just, we're so close. I don't know if, if more time would help, but it seems like that would be a good compromise.
Councilmember Wagen.
Yeah, I just go back to when I was on the planning commission, we just approved the entitlements, not the actual, you know, plan of what this conceptual site plan is. This is just, again, in concept here, but, you know, where their potential for a road here goes, that's just what I'm hung up on at this point. I think I'm, I'm, I agree with the need for the facility to be the size that the facility is. It's just, what's it going to look like when you've got a service road that's impacting right in the middle of their entrance to their project? So that's the only place where I'm hung up on this. And I, I know that the OC SAN said that it can be, that service road can be anywhere, but, you know, how do you make... But, you know, how do you make that anywhere without impacting, you know, the creation of this project that they want to develop? So I just, I hope we're not rushing to a decision here that will impact the future of what that site looks like and what the ability is to service that station. So I guess that's, I think, at this point where I'm hung up on.
Got it. So I don't think anything about this process has been rushed, given, given the packets and the discussion. I, so I think, I think I'm at the point where I'd kind of like to see where folks are on the votes. I think there's nothing in this record that has convinced me that there's room for compromise on the, on the discussion. The litigation, and fairly heavy litigation, is pretty serious. And considering the amount of additional other agencies that are going to have to take a look at this, there's going to be a lot of time before dirt, you know, the construction is actually starting, which is also, which gives a whole lot of time for, you know, the eminent domain litigation to be playing out. I just come back to, I think, I think, to be fair to both sides, we've got to pay attention to really only what's in front of us. And redesigning the layout is not one of them. The, you know, trying to, trying to start changing ingress egress on the, on PCH doesn't seem to be one of them either. So, you know, like I said, I don't, I don't think anyone's excited about this one. But we, this is a basic core function of government, is to make sure that we have a sewer system that works properly. And there is a not, not zero, non-zero risk that more time on this defeats the purpose of why we're replacing this in the first place, which is the aging infrastructure. So I'm going to go ahead and make a motion that we deny the appeal, and see if we have a second.
Mr. Mayor, can I just ask a point of clarification just to the city attorney? Is that, is that correct? I mean, am I, what I'm talking about with service roads and things like that, is that kind of not really part of the question tonight? Or part of it in the mayor's assessment that that's not what's before us? And what's before us is, if he's right, then, then, then maybe we should be more taking that into consideration. I just want to make sure that I have what I'm supposed to do in front of me and doing it correctly.
No, I, I do think that, you know, the primary issue you're looking at here is can you, you're looking at the project that's here, so you're not looking at a different project. And you're looking to see whether you can make the findings or not. So that's kind of what's before you. You know, there is an ability to add a condition. If you can, if you couldn't make a finding, but you could make it with a condition, you could add a condition to the approval. But, you know, that's sort of the scope of the world you're working in.
So that condition could be something where they have to come back and discuss the service road once the project is complete?
No, not that.
Just throwing it out there. But, but I like the forceful response.
You can do anything but that.
All right. So we have a second from the mayor pro tem. Do we have any further discussion on this? All right. Then let's go ahead and vote and see where we're at.
Just before we vote, can I just ask what some conditions we could put on this would be that perhaps would be beneficial to us while we're here at this discussion? Is that too late to ask that question?
Let's go ahead and, you know what?
Get where I'm going.
I do, but...
I just, we're here, but if there's a way...
No, I understand.
I'm just curious if there's...
Give me a moment on the parliamentary inside. To be fair, we've spent a lot of time on this. Let's go ahead and clear the vote without reading in the results. And let's go ahead and, go ahead and answer the question.
So it sounded like the Sand District might be amenable to having smaller trucks take access from, you know, not from Coast Highway, and that may solve some of the concerns? I don't know. Is that what I heard from the Sand District? That you would be open to having smaller chemical trucks take access from the, you know, from the kind of side street instead of from PCH?
I believe we would be amenable to limiting the size of the chemical trucks. That's fine. But we're not amenable to losing our access from PCH. It's an important part of our maintenance access, so...
But you'd still have access. What you would agree to is, is taking, leaving the access point on PCH, but using smaller chemical trucks that would not access the site from PCH.
But then I'm sure we'll all hear that it'll take more truck trips to get the same dosing. So this is not OC Sand changing its mind. It's, it's the process.
So can I ask one clarification on that, then? So as part of this new configuration, the proposal, one of the things that was said was as, as part of the current proposal, that's what's required to some of the access issues, you know, backing up or whatnot. As part of the new one, the one that's proposed here, would there also be the same access issues of needing to back up on a PCH? Or now, can you just pull through because you have more frontage?
The idea would be that we would pull through.
Got it. So the, so the smaller or bigger trucks is no longer really the issue anymore, because even if you were pulling through, it's, it's now more safe, I guess, than, than the current design?
Correct. But it will increase truck traffic through the development.
If we did the smaller.
Right.
Right. But I'm saying on the bigger, if you were still having to go through, if your access was still being on, on, on PCH using larger trucks, my question is, is it now still a safer design because of the designer? Or is it still the same issue that we have right now?
It'll be the similar issue to now. The truck will have to pull in, will have to back up, offload, and then pull through.
Mm-hmm.
So there will be backing. It'll be within the compound in the current design.
Got it. So smaller trucks, more traffic, larger trucks, status quo?
Less often, they're on the apron.
Okay. Any other questions? Yeah, I, that's, that's what I thought. That's what I thought. Yeah. Mm-hmm. Okay. So you probably might need to put them...
So that was what I was asking earlier, and I really didn't actually get the right answer. So the Coast Highway access that we have right now will then link up to the access road that goes through the property. So you'll go in Coast Highway and come out on the property and down, back down Bayside, back to, like a big circle. Okay. That's what I was asking earlier. Okay. Thank you.
Got it. All right. So we now have a motion and a second without additional conditions. So let's go ahead and now I'll call the vote. So that, just to be clear, the vote is, the motion is to deny the appeal. So voting yes would mean denying the appeal and moving forward with the project. Voting no would mean, well, actually, that's all. Voting no would mean not that.
With Councilmembers Blom and Climen voting no, the motion carries four-two.
All right. I appreciate the time and effort on this one. And y'all will be spending a lot more time with one another going forward. So we ask that you keep, keep considering the difficulty on this one. All right. Now we'll move into item number 14. I'll give a moment for folks to exit. Yeah, I got it.
Well, can you give me a...
We're just going to have a, we've been going for a little while. So just hold tight for a second. All right. Thanks for taking that break. Let's move right into item number 14. Jason, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. I'd like to introduce Abigail Marin. She's our newest addition to the finance department. She's our budget analyst. I'm handing it over to her.
Good evening. Today, we will be going over the fiscal year 2324 fee study update. As a bit of background on our fee study, the city reviews user fees and charges on a rotating basis, where each department's fees are reviewed every three to five years to ensure proper recovery of cost of services. During this fiscal year, the city engaged ClearSource Financial, a consultant who also conducted last year's study, to assist with performing a study of user fees and charges in the finance, harbor, public works, and utilities departments. Additionally, there were a few went-off fees in departments not studied, such as tow fees, a credit card convenience fee, and Navy technical support. The cost of service analysis considered direct and indirect labor costs, operational costs, and overhead to determine a fully burdened hourly rate for personnel providing services. It also considered the time required to perform the service. The product of these two factors resulted in the cost of service. It should be noted that the scope of the study did not include taxes, development impact fees, or utility rates. The proposed fees were reviewed by the finance committee on March 14th, where a recommendation was made that the proposed fees move forward for city council consideration. The authority that the city has to charge cost recovery based user fees start with Newport Beach Municipal Code, which mandates 100% cost recovery except for those fees designated as a subsidy. The fiscal sustainability plan answered in council policies such as policy F4, which directs the city to establish appropriate cost recovery targets for fee structures and annually adjust the structure to ensure the fees continue to meet cost recovery targets. When we talk about cost recovery fees, there's a general spectrum for these fees that range from the general benefit provided to the public or private benefit. When we talk about fees and subsidies, we tend to see that if there is a general benefit, these fees tend to be subsidized by general revenues. When the fee is a private benefit, such as a single person or single company type of fee, that benefit is usually not subsidized by any general revenues. Throughout the study, there were new fees proposed, which are outlined on this slide and in the staff report. I'd like to point out that the public works department had no new fees. I'd also like to highlight a few of the new fees that are proposed. For example, in the finance department, a business license initial application fee for online applications is proposed. The revenue division initially offered the online application as an option at no cost. This structure was initially established to incentivize individuals to utilize the city's online portal to streamline the process despite staff time involvement. However, it is recommended at this time that the city seek full cost recovery at a fee of $6. In the harbor department, 12 new fees were proposed, which includes a deposit fee for the use of human lift at Marina Park and Baboa Marina public dock. In the utilities department, two new fees are proposed, including a water and sewer establishment fee for remote activation, which is now required since all old analog residential and commercial meters have been converted to advanced digital meters. Other additional new proposed fees include a credit card convenience fee of 2.85% for online credit card payments. This fee will be phased in across all departments till out time for outreach to communicate the change, and we'll begin with utilities. I also want to point out that 23 fees are going down across the study departments due to streamline operations and more efficient processes. The proposed fee updates will result in approximately $581,000 of additional dollars of additional revenue next fiscal year. The additional revenue is expected from proposed changes to fees and charges are intended to offset the cost of providing existing services associated with those fee-related regulatory functions. Most fees in the study are set at 100% cost recovery, except for fees that are intentionally subsidized as an appeal fee, and those fees that are limited based upon state law. On March 14th, the proposed fee changes were presented to the finance committee. Today, we have shared the proposed Newport Beach Municipal Code changes and introduced ordinances. A second reading of proposed ordinance changes is scheduled for a 14th council meeting. The effective date for the proposed fee update is recommended to be July 13th, except for CPI adjustments, which would be effective July 1st. And today, we recommend and ask of council to conduct a public hearing and approve the fiscal year 2324 study update and related recommendations reflected in the staff report. And with this, this concludes our presentation. Open for questions.
Well, I have one. So while we were sitting here, we apparently received a letter from our local county supervisor that I hadn't been reached out to by her before this. And I was, I've been alerted that while we were also sitting here, she took to Twitter to talk about a, can you go back? No, one more forward. Sorry. Go, one more? There you go. So the deposit for the use of human lift, she took to Twitter and said, "The council's proposed fee increases create significant financial barriers for persons who already face fiscal barriers to dock access and may be in potential violation of the ADA, the Tylenz Act, the city's lease with the County of Orange for the docks." Mr. Blank, are you doing all of that by proposing this? I didn't think so, but our county supervisor's accusing us of doing that.
I don't believe we are, sir. I believe the proposed fee, which is not really a fee, it is a deposit based, or, sorry, a deposit in association with a reservation for use of the human lift. If the, if the reservation is honored and the lift is used as reserved, the deposit will be returned. This is specifically put out there as a deterrent for people irresponsibly using the reservation system for the lift and causing staff to deploy the lift and then not have it used.
Did anyone from the supervisor's office reach out to your department to, to ask about, about that before making those accusations?
There was one email to which I responded, asking for policy around the lift. And it is clearly, and actually, I'm sorry, I was privy to an email, I did not respond to it. The real property manager did. And that, the real property manager referred a county staff person, OC Parks representative, to our policy for the use of the lift, which is clearly published on our website, as is the reservation form and conditions for use, as well as the liability waiver. So it's all very clear how the use, I'm sorry, how the, the lift could be reserved and what its policy for use is. There is no fee for it and no deposit currently.
No, and I appreciate that. I, I get it. I, it's disappointing to have a representative misrepresenting a proposal from staff, but I appreciate clarifying that. I suppose, before you're done, on that same issue, though, so, so if, if someone were to ask for this, they'd, they'd put a deposit down, and then it would, and then if they showed up, they get the money right back. If they don't show up, then that's essentially the cost of the staff time to set it up. And is there hardship wa, hardship waiver, where if someone said, hey, look, something really bad happened on my way over, you'd be able to waive those fees?
Absolutely.
And if they had a, and in this case, if they had a health emergency or something related to their disability, they'd be able to step up? And we would, we would not, we would refund that, that money?
Correct. Even if it were weather related.
And so tell me, tell me a little bit more about what the issue is that, you know, brought, brought this forward, so I at least have an idea of why the, why it's being proposed.
One of the lifts' most frequent users has made reservations in the past and then not honored them. And either did not show up to make use as reserved, or canceled within 60 minutes of the scheduled use. By the time we get to 60 minutes within the scheduled use, the lift has been deployed, the staff time has been spent. So the staff resources and the city resources have been expended. And we felt that that was irresponsible. We felt that this new deposit would curb that bad behavior.
Got it. Okay. All right. Thank you. Mr. Wagon?
Yeah, I was going to ask on something else, but Paul, while, while you're there, so is, so how does it work as far as, you know, the discretionary action that you would make or the, you know, at your discretion as far as waiving, you know, that cost? If they are, like as the mayor said, a medical emergency, you know, these are, these are ADA folks, so I want to make sure that we are treating them fairly and, you know, that, I get the abuse that had occurred and the waste of staff time. That, that's, that's very unfortunate. Is there some, you know, mechanism that maybe there's some type of warning system or some type of, you know, I just want to make sure that, you know, we're, we're not just, you know, out, if there could be a policy that, and I hate that, to burden you with more work, but, you know, just to make sure that we're covered on that, so that if somebody does have these instances and you're not there to make that decision, somebody else wasn't paying, you know, attention, and we do reject, or we do cause that, you know, financial hardship. hardship. Is there any protection there, I guess?
There is nothing written. There is nothing associated with adopting this fee that would support that. However, we do, in all cases, take into account the unique circumstances for any reservation we take, whether it be for a slip, a mooring, or use of the human lift. And we have the discretion to waive those fees or refund deposits whenever it seems reasonable, and our aim is to keep the harbor clean and safe and well-enjoyed. The use of the human lift is a huge component in keeping the harbor well-enjoyed, and it is our intent to see that it is properly well-enjoyed. This particular proposed deposit is an attempt to curb bad behavior. We are aware of only a single user of that human lift that has caused this bad behavior and has resulted in this proposed fee. So any new user, any existing user that has come to us before and makes a one-time reservation... I'm sorry, makes a reservation and then one-time is unable to honor that reservation, we would certainly consider the circumstances, whether it be weather or health-related, and waive the fee or return the deposit in those circumstances. For the particular heavy user of the lift, we are no longer interested in providing services unless he is committed to making use of them. It is simply protecting all of your tax dollars and the people's resources that we are putting this one fee in to address the bad behavior of a single user.
I guess that's my problem. It just kind of sounds like it's something the legislature would do, is create a bill for one instance. So, look, I do totally believe everything you're saying, and I totally get what the mayor's saying on this. I guess to create a fee for one guy that's been causing trouble, it's almost like, can we just ban that guy from using? But I guess you can't, right? So that's the dilemma that we're in when it comes to this. If we don't institute the fee, then this guy will continue to cause issues down at this particular location, right?
And consume resources that otherwise could have been used to provide services to others.
Right. I think you've answered the question. I think we need to communicate that properly. I think you did in the staff report, but having this discussion here, I think the public should know, we're not trying to attack anyone in ADA. We're simply just saying there's abuses to this that do cost time, and if we're traveling all the way on boat to the new location, that's a significant amount of time and distance, and you're not going to go beyond wake speed to get there. So you're going to have to take pretty much a long service time, and just to not have it be used is unfortunate. So I think I'm okay with that. I did have a question on the two-point-five-percent credit card convenience fee that the discussion was to phase it. How long is that phase and process going to take? Is that January first? Do you think that's next fiscal year? Is that like next week? And explain the communication. It'll just be in their bill, but a lot of folks aren't really... And I guess to further beyond that part, two-point-eight-five percent. I'm not a business owner, but there is one here, but two-point-eight-five is that kind of standard? Is there a way to get that lowered? Have we been pressing some of the companies? If we eliminated Amex, which tends, I think, to be higher and only had it for Visa and MasterCard, could we get that convenience fee lowered to, say, two percent or even lower? So just kind of curious on that, and maybe some examples of some other utilities that are not allowing credit cards. I think your gas company bill doesn't allow for you to use a credit card. My T-Mobile doesn't, but then I think Edison might, and I think Spectrum does. So just kind of explain that one a little bit more for me.
So the two-point-eight-five percent is actually an average of the fees that we studied over the course of the last year for credit cards that have been used to pay for their utility bill. We started looking at this for utility bill payments because we found that we're paying about a half a million dollars on credit card fees for utility bill payments. And so what this would do is this would apply to all online payments made using a credit card. We would start with utility bill payments because that's the largest amount of money being paid towards credit card fees, and we would... The fees go into effect on July thirteenth, but as you know, utility customers pay their bills generally bi-monthly. And so we would plan on implementing the convenience fee in the September-to-October timeframe, which would allow sufficient time for us to message, let's say, two bills prior to actually going into effect. And then after moving away from utility billing, we would look at another group of fees. Let's say for community development, they have building and planning fees that are paid on occasion online. We would look at implementing it there, and then from there and so on, we'd go down to each department to implement it over the course of potentially a couple of months to maybe even a year or two.
So if you don't heed the messaging for that September bill, it'll just be built in because you wouldn't have updated your credit card information. So you would essentially just be paying two-point-eight-five percent in addition to your bill.
Right.
Gotcha. Okay. I might make some recommendations or suggestions later, but wait for later.
Got it. Councilmember Grant.
Just quickly, going back to the handicapped deposit for the lift. I understand the frustration that you would have and your concern with adequately applying the resources of our community fairly, and I think that it's unfortunate that we have this circumstance, but I also think that given weighing it in balance with the possibility of maybe using a softer touch and trying to work directly... This is one individual. This isn't hundreds of individuals. Maybe there's a way that we can find a good working situation with this one individual so that we can avoid the potential impacts of this proposal. So I'm really not in favor of it at this juncture. I think if we need to relook at it later, if there's more inadequate use of the facility when it's been reserved or more impact to the cost to the city, it might be more justified. And again, I understand the frustration and the limited resources that we have with your team and how professional they are in making sure that these things are provided adequately and quickly. And so I'm hoping that we can be patient with the community and come to some sort of navigated result that doesn't require us to have this deposit. And then, again, the ultimate ramifications, the ripple effect of having it and how it can be perceived and that kind of thing. So that's just my thought on that particular item.
So, Mr. Hart, I mean, generally applicable policy seems... I'd be surprised if in all of our municipal code, we don't have something that says if you abuse a city rental or purposefully cause us to waste staff time, that you would be offered the same thing over and over and over again. So, I mean, it just strikes me that perhaps a fee's not necessary, but if we don't have that in the municipal code, which would surprise me, maybe that's the path is... Because I don't need it specific to this. I actually don't want that at all in any regard where someone is asking our staff to show up and do things and then repeatedly fails to show up. So perhaps that's the approach over a fee that's specific to this issue. But I'm kind of curious, do you think we have that in our municipal code? And if not, maybe that's what we need to bring back.
Yeah, so there is a municipal code provision that allows for certain policies and procedures to be adopted administratively, so we can definitely handle this.
Yeah, I think that's probably the better approach on this one, because, again, I appreciate what they're going through, but I'm not sure we need to do a fee specific to it. It does strike me as something that we should be doing on a general level. Councilmember Blom.
Sorry. Started talking about reservation fees and credit card funding, and so I thought I would at least jump in here real quick. We've edited this well, I think, through the Finance Committee, and I'm thankful for Finance Committee members up here and talking about these fees, and I think it's important to realize we don't do this arbitrarily. Actually, as Jason mentioned, I thought, wow, that was low comparatively, so I like that not that many people in Newport are paying with Amex, apparently. That seems wrong. But I'm a big fan of deposits. I think as deterrents, they're great. They are broad-sweeping and for everybody. That way, we don't have to spend staff retourses trying to work on one individual person. This is something that kind of protects what we do. You know, we're in a game where on the personal side, I take a lot of reservations and lots of people don't show up, and there is a cost associated with it. And rather than trying to then hinder people in the future from doing it, you put in safeguards that maybe make it more equitable across the board and ensure that people will actually be there. So I'm in favor of the fee. I think administratively, it gets tough. We start spending more time and energy trying to... You know, I'm not going to use the word reprimand, but that's kind of what this seems like, and doesn't really seem like our job, and so I kind of like this deposit approach. So I'm in favor of the current recommendation, but still happy to work with whatever you guys want to do up here.
Okay. All right. Let's go out to public comment on this item.
Mayor O'Neill and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. Regarding the lift issue, it does seem to me some people would be skeptical about giving the government money and then expecting to get a refund for it, and having to put up one-hundred-and-seventy-one dollars to use what's supposed to be a free public convenience might be a deterrent to some people. So I might suggest, is there not an alternative to this where one simply on the reservation website put a warning that if you fail to show up, that you will be assessed this fee? And then it would be on the Harbor Department after the fact to collect that penalty for not using it so that the other users would not have to go through the rigmarole of putting in a deposit and then getting a refund for it? And while the city may have trouble collecting after the fact, could we not, I don't know if it's legal, tell a person if they do not pay the penalty that they will not be able to make reservations in the future? It seems like some system like that could be workable. But the comment I wanted to make is about the new format of the fee schedule that you are being asked to adopt with this resolution. We've taken what were twenty-seven pages of very fine print that was a little hard to read and turned it into, it looks like fifty pages of kind of bigger print, but there are a lot of things that have been lost in this. The previous fee schedule had a unique number for every fee, so it made it something people could reference. Now it's harder actually to reference a particular fee. You have to mention what page or department or something it's in, and then the numbers are repeated. More important than that, we have a column here saying what the fee was in the previous fiscal year. I'm not quite sure why we're telling people what it was in the past. What they're interested in is what it is now. One of the columns that we're missing is what the fee is based on, what's the source of it. The current schedule gives a citation to the municipal code, which I would think would be helpful internally certainly and somewhat helpful to the public to know what the justification is. Where is it written that this fee should be assessed? That column is missing. And more importantly than that, and I'm not sure how this works, the new schedule just says all of this will go into effect on July first. Our current schedule shows that a number of the fees by past council resolution or ordinance change on different dates during the year. So some of them go into effect on January first, some of them in August. They have different dates, and I don't know how this new fee schedule is going to work. Don't recall that being discussed by the Finance Committee. It seems like rather a big change in public policy, and I'm not sure even the resolution can override some of the previous actions that caused the dates to change differently. So I'm not quite understanding this new fee schedule that we have, missing both the citation to the code and when the fee goes into effect. The staff report says they're all on July first. I don't know if that's true or not. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Leverens, I had some graphics, hopefully.
Okay. This first page is from a page numbered fourteen-dash-seventeen in the attachment A from the Revenue Department from the fee study. Line seventeen C is the charge for guest moorings. That's people who come in and rent a mooring for a night. The proposed, and also I believe current, fee is a dollar forty-two per linear foot. If you work that out and multiply it times three-hundred-and-sixty-five days and divide by twelve, you get a monthly rate of a little over seventeen-hundred-and-twenty-seven dollars per month. That's high. I mean, that's almost what a slip would cost. And the setting of such an extraordinarily high offshore mooring rate dissuades boaters. And this in conjunction with the fact that mooring permittees can't sublet their moorings creates an artificially limited market for moorings, which drives up the price. This is also the case with the fees for the new mooring license program from the Harbor Department. You've got nearly a hundred vacant moorings every day that would more likely be generating revenue if the prices were more reasonable, and it makes little sense for the city to charge people less for a mooring license where the taxpayers are maintaining the tackle as opposed to renting a vacant mooring of a permittee where the permittee's paying for the tackle. If I could bring up the next page. The Harbor Commission has recommended a phase-in, and as the fee schedule indicates, adjustments in the past have been based on CPI, which is what this chart shows. But the Harbor Commission is recommending for the fees that each year, the increase will be adjusted based on a twenty-four percent of the annual adjustment percentage per the Marine Index. So that CPI is going to go away, so all those fees are inaccurate. And if you go historically, the last three years at Balboa Yacht Basin, annually, things have gone up fourteen or fifteen percent. So in reality, for a forty-foot mooring at the end of the phase-in, the commission has a figure of four-hundred-and-eighty dollars and eighty cents, but in actuality, that would be nine-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars. The subsequent page is a rate sheet from Balboa Yacht Basin. I wanted to touch on a couple other things. The credit card convenience fee, think about, I'm going to start paying with a money order or a check. What's the time to process or come into cash? Think about what time lost will be by people paying without a credit card. And then I'd request, there's a mooring license application fee in the fee schedule, a mooring license waitlist fee, but the actual mooring license fees aren't in there. I think they should be in there at the same time. And also, the mooring transfer fee being based on seventy-five percent of the annual rent, that's the highest fee a mooring owner pays. That should be incorporated in the fee schedule. And then it would be helpful to look at peer permit fees at the same time to address the disparity between the two.
All right. Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Jessie Fleming. I live on a mooring, J twenty-three. I was just... Oh, I guess that's it.
No, no. Come on back up.
I was looking at a lot of the percentages, two percent, twelve percent, somewhere twenty percent. There's one on there, which is the impound for dinghies, and it's a hundred-and-twenty-one percent increase. Bad timing right now, and people aren't coming to these meetings because they're upset with the Harbor Commission already. They tell me they're too angry, they don't want to come. I've heard the Harbor Department, I love, we work together with them, but others are saying they're the Gestapo, the Harbor Nazis, isn't that writing on the dinghies all the time? And it's just unfortunate to raise it that much. Most of the people that have dinghies have dinghies that are not worth a hundred dollars because we don't have lights, we don't have security cameras on the docks, things get stolen. So they don't even go and get their dinghies back until then maybe they can get to the auction and buy it back for twenty dollars, because they won't pay the hundred dollars. But now it's going up to two-hundred-and-forty dollars. A lot of us live aboard don't have nine-foot dinghies because a lot of us are disabled. I just got a knee replacement. I do have a nice little rowboat I use to put in the twenty-four hour, but I also have an eleven-foot dinghy that I use that's more stable. And our dinghies that are over ten feet have to stay within a three-hour period. I can barely get to the laundromat and back, let alone the laundromat, the grocery store, or even if we go to work. I went to volunteer at LA the other day on the tall ships. I was back fifteen minutes late, and I had to go pay a hundred-and-ten dollars to get my dinghy back. Other people have had their dinghies taken away right when they're there because they're an hour late, but they're there, but yet, boom, gets taken away. So maybe we can find a way to work together. I used to have to bail out dinghies in the rain. Now the Harbor Department comes and they help us bail out the dinghies. So there's a lot of great things they're doing, keeping those docks open for us, but let's try to work together and not make it an us and them, and let's make it a team effort where it's not feeling like people are... where it's not feeling like people are saying they just want us out of here. So please reconsider that one impound fee if you can. I think it would make things go a lot more peaceful in the harbor. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Patricia Coomans, and I spend a lot of time, I have a mooring down at the harbor. And since we spend a lot of time, we've rescued a lot of boats. A lot of duffys get caught up in the mooring lines and dinghies go adrift from boats. And I rescued probably four or five boats that have gone adrift. Call the harbor or when they pass by, give them a wave and they take them. But this last time, there was a stand-up board adrift, waved them down, they came, they took it, and ended out being a neighbor's. I didn't recognize it. And it was all within a certain amount of time, all within probably 45 minutes. And he was charged $110 to get his stand-up board back. And he needed it, it's his way to get back and forth with the boat so he doesn't have to use the dock. Now that fee is going up to 243. I will never rescue a boat and give it to the harbor and do that to someone again. Never. If it's a stand-up board, I'll place an add, a lost and found, but I will never use the harbor again. To do that to someone would just be cruel. And as far as the charge card, I mean, we're paying 130 a month. After buying our mooring, which are going for $50,000, they're getting rid of our equity by charging us the same amount that they are moorings they're giving away. So we've lost our equity, we're all losing our equity in our moorings by this. And it's planned, we understand what they're doing. And they're going to charge us from 130 to 800 a month. And now you want to charge us another, I figured out the interest that you want to charge when we charge our moorings is going to be another 258 a year. It's, if a line breaks, now you want to give us a fine? It's, it's just getting crazy. This has created a very unfriendly environment in the harbor. Visiting boats now that pass through, cruising to Mexico, they don't even want to come into Newport Beach anymore. It's just become so unfriendly and nickel and dime to death. That's it. You know, a lot of people are very upset, a lot of people are selling their boats now. And it's going to cause some people out there to be homeless.
All right, next speaker, please.
I'm Amy Planeton, I just wanted to comment real quick, the 2.85%, somebody said that's average. I don't know if that's going to be a lot more than what you would be getting because the figure up there was like three times higher than what they said was for utility payments. And I don't know, it doesn't really matter if it's only for paying to the city or if that's something related to all businesses in the area, which would probably be more appropriate for the citizens if it was maybe just like during tourism season.
All right, next speaker, please. All right, we'll bring it back. So one of the, one of the topics for discussion is whether we want to do the deposit or whether we want to try to just do it through administrative procedures. Mr. Harp, if we wanted to just, if we wanted to just do it through administrative procedures, what would be the process on that one?
So we can handle that internally as far as the administrative procedures. As far as tonight, you would just add to the motion to basically reduce the percentage of recovery to 0% for, you know, those two items so that the, wouldn't be paying a deposit fee, it would just go to zero, and then we'll, we'll handle it administratively.
Yeah, since we're only dealing with one, on that one, we're only dealing with one fee as opposed to, as opposed to, you know, if, I don't want to have everyone vote against all of this because of one thing. So I might just do a straw poll, but before I do that, Councilmember Wagon.
I just wanted to ask Paul maybe on that, a couple of comments on the dinghy. I have no idea what any of this means. So dinghies will get lost along the way somehow? And are they greater than 14 feet most dinghies or are they smaller than 14 feet? Like what?
Tenders or dinghies are considered 14 feet or less. And there is a fee for impound and storage of wayward, stray, or improperly birthed dinghies today. The proposed fee is somewhat higher. The proposed fee is all based on a time and resources study.
So the 15C towing fee, abandoned impounded boats over 14 but less than 25 doesn't exist, and we're creating that to 377. So that's a new, and then towing fee boats under 14 are increased from 74 to 129?
Forgive me. So an impound is different than the towing fee. So the impound fee is something we charge. The towing fee
Oh, that's number four.
referring to in item 15, that's if a boat is in distress or a boat is wayward or a rental customer cannot get back to their rental service provider. We do provide those services. Currently, we do not have a fee to collect from, from somebody in a boat between 14 and 25 feet for that. We would, we are capable of doing that. Most of us are licensed to do that. We do not have a fee that we can charge them or charge the rental operator for that. We could call one of the commercial tow services and the fee would be several times that.
Right. Okay, thanks.
I just want to start by Harbor Master Paul Blank. I love the work you do on the harbor. I'm a frequent user of the harbor, and your department is one of my favorites. So I just want to give you the credit you deserve when it comes to well enjoyed, safe and on the harbor. My question to you is this ADA issue, I've dealt with this user before. It's not one individual, it's one individual who brings others on a regular basis. Do you have any idea in a given month, how many times he might reserve the lift in a given month? Ballpark?
I think the largest time, the largest number of reservations he's ever made in a single month was six. He has made
How many of those did he show up for?
Two.
Oh, yeah, that's, this is clearly
But that is not a regular occurrence. In this fiscal, I'm sorry, in this calendar year, he's made three reservations and he's honored all of them.
Oh, okay. Understood, thank you.
Councilmember Avery.
It's tough to nail this down because the harbor department does a lot to help people without charging fees, I mean, pumping out boats and a lot of different activities. But at the same time, yeah, if you ask a private tow operator to tow your dinghy, it's going to be a big number, much, much larger. I do think it, and I don't know how we measure the time, you know, someone picks up a dinghy way down at the end of the harbor and the time it takes to bring it up to where we're going to store it. You know, there's different levels of time for each tow, I suppose. It's a little granular at that point. But my main point is it, it's unfortunate when people lose their, something off the boat, like a paddleboard, or they don't tie the dinghy upright, or somebody, somebody just turns their dinghy loose on the dock when they're untieing their other boat. And it just seems a little tough for folks to, you know, pay a couple hundred dollars to get their, their dinghy back. But other, you know, but if it's not towed back, it goes out the harbor entrance, winds up on the beach, or somebody takes it for their own. So in a way, your property is being kind of taken care of by the harbor department, you know, regardless of the reason it got loose. And there's, there's a cost for that. And I think the lowest cost out there would be the harbor department finding your dinghy and bringing it in. Thank you.
Councilmember Wagon.
Back to the convenience fee, 2.85. I'm satisfied with it, but I'd like to see it implemented at the beginning of the year, January 1st, instead of the September timeframe. I think giving a little bit more notice to residents and there, yeah, there are some that are lower income and Newport Beach does have that, so some on fixed income. So it is, you know, average bill that I see is over $300. So, you know, just kind of getting stuck with that without having enough warning, I think would be, be better just to start at the beginning of the year. So that's my thought on that.
Councilmember Avery.
Last thing, a lot of the, people on moorings, especially the live aboard, but people that are frequent on their boats, you know, it's a real community out there and people do take care of each other. And when winds are up and someone is having an issue, it's just norms that those help folks that are, you know, having some issues. And so I hope, you know, that that continues and that, that folks on moorings, they see a dinghy going down the bay, it's most likely from a moored boat that got away from them that maybe they would jump in. And I think that's still what happened today, and pick that dinghy up and at least tow it, get it to their boat and check to see who's missing a dinghy, that kind of thing. So, but I do know that over the years, that's been sort of the ethic of all the people that live on, on their boats in our harbor.
Got it. All right, let's work through a couple of issues then. On the first one, the issue of the, of the lift, my inclination is to go with the, the process that our city attorney just laid out and just move forward with the administrative fee versus the deposit. And so that people can be on record on that particular one without having to vote up or down on the entire package. I'd like to just do a quick straw poll. So if you're in favor of moving forward without collecting on the fee, but instead moving forward with a administrative approach, please raise your hand.
That's unanimous?
I don't think so.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll be unanimous.
Okay.
Okay. All right. And then the other question was whether we should move forward with the convenience fee on January 1st, 25, or go into effect July 1st. I will say my inclination is to move forward with July 1st. That provides a couple of months to people. Plus, I've, I've actually taken a look to see how many of our utility bills already require us to go with through bank account. Actually, it's more than I thought. So I think that for most folks, they, they have to do it through, some of them already. If I recall correctly, IRWD doesn't even offer a credit card option. So it's, it's a, it's something that's certainly taken place. And part of the reason I'd like to move forward with it now is because the faster we can either transition over, or certainly the faster we can get, we can get people to, it's, there's a lot of money that should actually be going toward either infrastructure or, or the water itself, or, or the service side on the, on the labor. And instead, it's going toward credit card companies. I'd really like it to go toward what we're actually trying to provide instead of to credit card companies. So I, my inclination would be to move forward, but I'm willing to take a straw poll if you'd like.
Yeah, I'm not trying to say we need to waive it in perpetuity. I'm just saying it would be nice to give a little bit more time than just that upcoming bill.
Got it. All right, well, why don't we, why don't we just do that then on the straw poll? If you're, if you're in favor of moving forward with that, starting July 1st is recommended, then go ahead and raise your hand now.
July 1st, everyone except for Councilmember Wagon.
Okay. All right, then what I'll do is I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve the staff recommendation with the modification to the, to the ADA lift issue. And I guess we don't need any other modifications. So that's my motion. If I have a second? Second by Councilmember Grant. Any other discussion? Yeah.
I just want to confirm with Jason. Jason, do the fees go into effect on July 1st? For some reason, I thought there was a different
They're actually July 13th, except for those fees that are being adjusted for CPI. Those are going to affect on July 1st. So the credit card fee would go into effect on July 13th.
Right. That's
And in a phase
I assume that's part of the motion.
Mayor, but didn't, didn't you also mention though, because of the way the fees are paid, that they actually wouldn't be charged until September?
Exactly. It wouldn't hit a bill until the September to October timeframe. Exactly.
Okay. Councilmember Wagon.
Yeah, I just want to bifurcate out that part of the, the vote that deals with the credit card transaction fee so that I can get a separate motion related to the, I will be voting against every, or for everything, but against that. So I just
Right, and that's why, that's why I put the straw poll in place, so that, so that you're on record as being opposed to that.
I guess that would be, you know, informally, but not formally correct.
Well, it shows up in the minutes.
It'll show up in the minutes that you were opposed to that portion of it. Was that satisfactory?
Yeah, I'll accept it.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Let's go ahead and vote.
Motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
All right. And last but not least, we'll move into item number 15, CDBG. Do we need a staff report on this one? Okay, let's go ahead and go to staff report.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Lauren Whitlinger with a public hearing on the community development block grant program, specifically the 2024-2025 annual action plan. The CDBG program is an annual allocation of federal funds to locally achieve the Department of Housing and Urban Development's objectives of developing communities with decent housing and expanding economic opportunities for low and moderate income residents. The one-year plan in front of you this evening funds projects that address the city's long-term goals that are included in the five-year consolidated plan. The annual plan would commence on July 1st, 2024. The action plan recommends funding eight programs for the upcoming year. Four of the programs are public services, including continuing the home-delivered meals for homebound seniors, homelessness prevention and housing with families forward, and a new career development program through the Boys and Girls Club. The plan also includes funding program administration to prepare the consolidated plan for the next planning cycle, which will be brought forward to city council for its consideration around this time next year. And then there's also a new capital program through Trellis International that is to assist low and moderate income seniors in Newport Beach. The funding would prevent homelessness by addressing code violations and other issues that put residents at risk of losing their housing. The city anticipates an annual allocation of just under $400,000, combined with program income of a little over $300,000. With the statutory limits of 20% and 15% on administration and public services respectively, the plan recommends funding $140,000 to program administration, $105,000 to public services, and the balance of the, the funding of 400, approximately $458,000 to the capital projects. One of the current programs recommended for continued funding is the city's motel voucher program. This program assists our police department and homeless liaison officer in their efforts to transition homeless individuals in the community into housing, whether that be a permanent supportive housing, family reunification, a shelter. The funds have been used to cover one to three nights motel stays, as well as to help ease the transition from living out on the streets into long-term housing.
I just want to be clear that those numbers up there just is reflecting of one quarter. We do have expenses for the other quarters, but we didn't have a chance to accumulate them, but they're averaging around that $3,000 mark per quarter.
So in addition to security deposits and applications for apartments, the funds are used for food staples and other household items to help someone establish a new household and remain housed. So to implement this upcoming action plan, the recommendation is to hold this public hearing, approve the action plan, and then staff and the consultant will work to prepare the documents and submit them to HUD, and then prepare all of the grant agreements and get those out to all of the subrecipients. Thank you.
Councilmember Kleiman.
Thank you for the report. I just have a couple of follow-up questions. It's called a motel voucher program, but it seems like it's much more than that, or maybe it's really not that at all, so maybe a bit of a misnomer. Can you kind of talk a little bit more about how it's being used or how those funds are being used? And then we, I think previously allocated less funds and now we're doubling that amount? Is that correct?
Thank you, Councilmember Kleiman. Yes, the, on the funding side, the additional program income is allowing us to fully fund all of the requests from the public service programs. So yes, the, the last year's funding was a little over $14,000, but they did programs. So yes, the, the last year's funding was a little over $14,000, but they did request $30,000. And with the additional program income, we're able to fully fund their request. And then additionally, the, the scope of the program is, is much more than a motel voucher program. It, it, the motel nights are really to kind of create that bridge between someone being on the streets, but having housing set up for them, whether that be going into permanent supportive housing, or going into an apartment, or even family reunification. It kind of allows the, the homeless officers and our other service providers to, you know, get that person kind of into housing and help ease the transition so that they can have a shower, they can have a hot meal, they can kind of get their head around, you know, getting off of the streets and, and being housed at the end of that process.
Sure. And so the program calls for $30,000, and it says to serve about 10 people. I mean, obviously it doesn't work out exactly to be, I'm guessing, 3,000 per person, but seems like kind of a large allocation.
It's generally much, they're serving many more people with that funding allocation with the $14,000 that they were granted last year. You know, with the, the sample expenses from one quarter, they were able to serve four people with that $2,000. So, you know, based on the cost ratio, they're serving a lot more people than, than they anticipate. I think they're just, you know, aiming a little low, just in case expenses, you know, are higher, or they're not able to serve those people because the, the number of people served is something that we report to HUD as well. So we want to overshoot those numbers.
Okay. And then for this Trellis program, do we know if they're using licensed and bonded contractors, or who's doing the work on, on these seniors homes?
Yes, it would be, yes, licensed contractors. It's pulling in donations from community businesses and, and people that volunteer their time. The funding is really to help kind of the administrative costs. And, you know, if they need to, to close a gap in the cost of a project, they'll use the funds for that.
Okay, great. Thank you. I appreciate the clarification.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. We'll go out to public comment. Yep. Thank you for waiting the whole time. I appreciate that. Sorry.
My time to shine now.
You are going to crush this public comment.
Well, thank you. Hello, everyone. My name is Rosalinda Bermudas, and I'm here on behalf of Families Forward to provide a public comment for the CDBG Annual Action Plan. On behalf of Families Forward, I wanted to commend City Council for the strong commitment to use CDBG funds to address homelessness and homelessness prevention in Newport Beach, and to thank you for your continued support for organizations like ours. We are extremely grateful to partner with the city of Newport Beach in our mission to prevent and end family homelessness. Working together, we have been able to help families find permanent housing, increase their income, access food, participate in mental health services, among many other resources. This would not be possible without the support, not, not only monetarily, but non-monetarily as well, from city, the city partners in Newport Beach. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Great public comment. Next speaker, please.
Adam Leverens. I interact with homeless people probably almost every day and have for a number of years. I bike and walk a lot, so I just, and I have close friends that live that way. It's a very difficult problem. As we all know, there's mental health issues, there's substance abuse issues, there's PTSD issues. There's some people that just can't stand to live with a roof over their head. I don't know how this is ever going to be solved. But in the presentation there, in the quarterly expenses, I saw a line item for Starbucks. It was a small item, but has a PR aspect to be, and I don't know what it was for, you know, but, but it just doesn't look good to be spending homeless dollars at Starbucks, in my humble opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Thank you again. Yeah, so I've been homeless for a while, and I've noticed a big gap in what America, our society is, is about, and, and what's going on with the homeless, everything. So we're a capitalist society. I was over in Riverside and was talking to Chamber of Commerce, and they were telling me to go to some certain particular division, and they could help with like a business plan or something like that. And if it's good, I could take it to a capital venture and, and maybe get some money for something like that. But America's not working like that right now. And, yeah, I just wanted to comment on the, it's what Trump said about the mental illness crisis in America and that we're, we're studying more, we're learning more, but we're having more people on drugs. And it's just, it's just because of corruption. So, and there's a big gap in, in the legal services that are offered to, to people. You can get free legal aid for certain things, but when you're gonna try and sue people to, because our, our country is going down the drain, there's no free legal services for that. And, you know, you can't find an Irish lawyer that's gonna represent you. So maybe, maybe Newport could be part of a pilot program for not just a competitive leadership for our students, because there's cartoons that, you know, America's having a leadership crisis besides Biden and, and the corruption I'm dealing with that I can't go into right now. Just, just consider maybe doing something different. I mean, Newport Beach is beautiful. I mean, I don't even know how there's any homeless people here. All of the houses are like $8 million. I can afford a house here if I'm consistently hitting the top 40 producing music, I don't think. But that, that's what Newport probably should be about, is some kind of small pilot program to help people that are having difficulties with our society that is not gonna get addressed in some other typical town.
All right. Next speaker, please. All right, we'll bring it back. One thing we, oh, sorry, go ahead, Councilmember Kleiman. I was gonna say, one thing we didn't mention is the use of these funds for the San Miguel Park playground replacement AD upgrades. I gotta say, I'm, I'm really pleased with the creativity on, on seeking funds through this for that priority. I'm, I'm really excited about that priority. I'm really excited. I think that this is a, this is something that Councilmember Avery and I have seen, you know, pretty amazing transformation in this city on the way that we're approaching parks and making them more accessible over the time that we've been on council. And this one's a big one. So anyway, I wanted to highlight that. Councilmember Kleiman.
I was just gonna make a motion if we're ready. I'll, I'll move to approve. I just, I'll add a gentle reminder that we did adopt, this council did adopt a policy last summer that requires us all to focus on the street exits. So as we heard from public comment, I noted the same thing. We want to make sure that we are really mindful about how we're spending taxpayer dollars. And, you know, I know that these are passed through with these funds, but it is, it is important that we are thoughtful about how we use these funds. Thank you.
I'll second the motion and the comments. Let's go ahead and vote.
Very slow. My apologies. Councilmember Grant, thank you. The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
And then I need to clean up one thing on item 14. The clerk needs to read off the municipal code.
The ordinance titles for ordinance 2024-12 and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach amending section 3.36.30 of the Newport Beach Municipal Code related to cost recovery percentages and ordinance 2024-13 amending section 15.2.85 addition of section 105.3.1.1 of the Newport Beach Municipal Code related to demolition waste disposal.
Great. Councilmember Wagon, before we go to motion for reconsideration?
I just wanted to make sure we highlight our new assistant city clerk to welcome her and thank her for her service.
Welcome, Jennifer. All right. Madam Clerk.
Motion for reconsideration, a motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the City Council. Either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Do we have any motions? All right. Seeing none, we're adjourned. Thank you.